Call this meeting back to order at 5:37 PM. And in accordance with the, with an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodation signed by Governor Baker on July 16th, 2022, which extended suspension of certain provisions of the open meeting law, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted with some remote participation. In addition to the in-person attendance of members of the public and the school committee, this meeting is also concurrently being presented through a Google Meet and by a live broadcast by NORCAM to allow the public and any school committee members who cannot attend in person the opportunity to participate. Welcome everybody to the new early start time, which will only be for this one and last meeting, but we are joined today by a number of distinguished guests who are going to talk about wastewater and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gilberto, I believe, Town Administrator, to talk about wastewater, the wastewater project.
Can everybody hear me okay? Great, so Mr. De Otafeli is bringing up the presentation. I'll just do a quick round of introductions again. Michael Gilberto, Town Administrator, joined today by Select Board member Steve O'Leary and Mencenzo Studo, who are in front of me, DPW Director Joe Perici, and we have two consultants from our consulting engineering firm, Wright Pierce, who have agreed to join us this evening as well, so appreciate your time here tonight. So I think you're all aware, we have the, we've had a pretty extensive wastewater planning effort going on for decades, depending upon, we had a conversation with him, Mr. O'Leary, I'm sure could elaborate on that, but really intensively for the past year since the special town meeting, the, excuse me, the October town meeting last year. Everyone see the screen okay? And the NORCAM?
Yep.
Great. So just a little bit of background, you know, currently any residential commercial development in North Reading is required to have onsite disposal or septic systems. There's one exception to that, it's a parcel of land on the Reading Wilmington Town Line where there was an industrial park that's been developed and connected through the MWRA through special legislation dating back to the early 1990s, Mr. O'Leary. The concept of public sewer in North Reading has been reviewed over the course of multiple decades with the town at various points and for various reasons electing not to proceed. Just a little bit about the reason that we've been looking into a public sewer. A Select Board believes that having such a utility would make more land area usable for development, would also allow for more dense development in our commercial and industrial areas. This would lead to increased economic development and also provide for more local services and more job opportunities for the region. A wastewater collection system would make possible some more multifamily development along Main Street, which could potentially create population density to support new business. In addition to this, and I think you're all aware, the Planning Commission has been working over the past five-plus years to develop some potential development opportunities for Main Street, specifically in the area of Main Street at Winter Street.
Good new first slide.
Thank you. So just a little bit, and we've kind of been asked just to kind of show a little bit more by picture, you know, why are we having this conversation? And just, you know, one quick image of downtown to our north in the town of Andover, and a similar image to our south in the town of Reading, and I think the thing that you see in those two pictures again is multi-floor development, multi-use development in the buildings, generally with some sort of retail on the first floor and perhaps some office or residential use on the upper floors. A little bit more about the need for public sewer. A wastewater collection system helps with public health, specifically trying to provide not only a diversion of contaminated or untreated wastewater from our lakes, rivers, and other aquifers, but also to provide something that's a sustainable, long-term, or even permanent solution through a wastewater utility versus for what often is a time-limited solution in wastewater onsite, especially for residential families. We're all familiar with what happens when these systems age out, they need to be replaced onsite. It's a contributing factor to our zoning, which requires generally an acre for new construction, depending upon the area, to allow for multiple constructions of a wastewater treatment facility for residential areas. So just a little bit about the article from last year. In October 2021, funding was approved for continued planning. Town's been designing wastewater for roughly 500,000 gallons per day for both a Phase One and Phase Two development. We contracted through Mr. Perici at a DPW with two consultants, first is Wright Pierce, who's here this evening, and then also with Kleinfelder, who is, they performed a municipal wastewater financial assessment study, and that really was aimed at looking at the estimated project costs and how they would be financed, as well as how they might, how the implementation of, and the construction of a wastewater utility would impact development in the community. So just a little bit about the route. You can see here on this map, to the right is Andover, and that's Main Street running sort of right to left or left to right. And then there are two legs that sort of come off of that main route. One is North Street to Lowell Road, eventually to Polte and the Edgewood Development. And then further south, you see off of Main Street, it goes down Park Street, and then to Concord Street where our primary industrial area is, ending at the Town Line. These squares that are in green you see there, those are proposed pump stations along the route, areas where we would need to locate either above or underground a facility to move wastewater to the Town Line with Andover, at which point it would be disposed of by sending it through a forced main to the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District plant in North Andover. We have an identified route that would go Route 28 or Main Street to Route 125, just north of the Town Line with Andover, ultimately to Route 114 by Merrimack College, and then down, past Merrimack College, down the hill to the Lawrence Line where it would pick up with a main that is owned by the town of Andover but located in the city of Lawrence. Both Andover and North Andover over the past 12 months have encouraged the town to look at options for a route that would be either slightly south, south of the Route 125 intersection with Route 114, or would not follow Route 114 in its entirety and would instead go through the North Andover Collection System. Discussions with these two communities continues, including the potential use of that existing gravity sewer line along the way that might be able to be upgraded to allow for our flow to be added to it.
Mr. Gilberto, just to clarify, so on that though, I think from the Finance Committee, they said that the, even if the route was changed a little bit, the cost is essentially the same, correct?
That's correct. The variance is very slight based on the projections we have right now. I know there's been some concern about that. There have been other changes to the projected cost estimate, which I'll get to, but they're not related to the route itself. So this does show the route. The red line is basically a forced main coming up through, from the, from North Reading through Andover up to Route 125, eventually to Route 114 where you see it takes up a red and green color. The red is sort of the, it's the proposed forced main route that we were originally looking at. That brown route that sort of takes a turn up on the screen is through existing, existing gravity sewer that is located in the town of Andover that would require some upgrading along the way to a pump station in Andover, the Shaheen Pump Station. The red one is the route that we were initially looking at, down Route 114, and the green is an alternate route that we've been having some discussion with the town in North Andover about where it would go down 114 to Route 1, excuse me, to Waverly?
Waverly.
Thank you, yes, I should remember at this point. I always know it from the Boston Market, but the name is Waverly Road. It would then pick up with the, the route, existing main that would probably need to be upgraded along some of the route and eventually connect to the plant, which you see is located in North Andover in that green square to the right-hand side. Just, I'm just going to stop for just a second. So that's a little bit about the route. Anything that folks want to add to that? Kind of looking to the folks who are here in support, if not, I'll keep them along. May I continue?
That was your time limit, sorry.
Yeah, we'll fully agree.
Here comes Patrick with the hook.
You're good, I'll grab my computer. All right. So just a summary of wastewater flows, and it's something that we spent a lot of time looking at, trying to understand what our existing wastewater needs would be, and that basically is a, is an indicator of what the current usage is in the area. So for the project, which is divided into two phases, we're only talking about funding at a special town meeting Phase One. Phase One would be again Main Street, Concord Street, North Street, Park Street. Phase Two would actually be the Martins Pond neighborhood, as I think we all know it, from the, basically west of Main Street and Borough's Road to the north, so the immediate Martins Pond area. So the Phase One area is about 186,000 gallons per day worth of wastewater flow today, and that's an average over three years' time, I believe, with regard to water consumption. Phase Two, the Martins Pond area, is similarly a smaller amount, 32,000 gallons, it's almost entirely residential, single-family, some multifamily residential. And then we, you need to reduce that by a groundwater infiltration amount that ends up in the wastewater system, and then there's what they call a safety factor in order to make sure that we're never actually maxing out that flow. So when you take those numbers out of the existing flow that we've been talking about for permitting, of 503,000 gallons, you end up with about 234,000 gallons per day available for future growth. So that growth could be development of, you know, previously undeveloped parcels that are vacant land right now, it could be a use that's in place right now that gets modified or expanded and creating additional demand. It could, it could take place in any number of ways, but in any scenario, that's above and beyond what the demand is today. And I think, we did this exercise and tried to show in this way, just to show that for the numbers you're going to see in terms of the projections for new growth from a financial standpoint, new tax revenue, we have the flow to account for that, the flow is there.
Couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
Heard it three times and I'm still going to ask questions. Number one, the, these numbers assume all the residents to sign?
Correct.
Okay. Number two, can you just speak quickly, I've heard through rumblings, like, I know Phase Two is Martins Pond, can you explain very quickly what the issue is with Martins Pond, why they need to go there, and what the alternative solution is if this doesn't happen?
Sure. So Martins Pond is an area where I think the last iteration of wastewater planning really got to the point of, Mr. O'Leary, I don't know whether it went to a town meeting or was close to getting to a town meeting, but we had a proposal for construction with betterments involved for the Martins Pond area, and it was more an environmental project and a residential land use project, that ultimately I think the neighborhood was really concerned about and never got to a full approval process. Anything you want to add to that?
The other thing is, it's important to understand that, you know, where we are today and where we were yesteryear. This project, or a project like this, never really got off the ground because from an economic standpoint, it wouldn't support itself. The state, up until, well, probably six or eight years ago, was of the mindset that in order for us to move forward with a project, we had to address the public health issue first, and the public health issue area of concern was Martins Pond. You know, very small, densely populated area, some of these properties require now tight tanks, you know, which have to be pumped out on a regular basis, just because of its proximity to the aquifer and the pond itself. But the state has changed their course in relation to promoting economic development. We had been advocating for years that, you know, economically, as much as we wanted to do this, we couldn't afford to do it because there wasn't enough customers, you know, to pay the bill and support it, and the community couldn't support building a whole wastewater treatment system just for Martins Pond. And they always said, you have to address this first, address this first. Well, again, the mindset change of the Patrick administration and it carried on through the Baker administration, where we understand you're going to get to that point, and we also understand that we want to promote economic development, in other words, you're going to support the system as we move forward in this fashion. So that's, that's a big plus. This was a huge impediment before. So this Phase Two, we put it on here and we reserved the flow that would be necessary to service the Martins Pond area, so it wouldn't be reallocated some other way, somewhere else. Again, when that takes place is going to be entirely up to town meeting and the community later on down the road. But we didn't want to not include this because it is still a little more public health issue that needs to be addressed, and we should be addressing from an environmental standpoint, and therefore, we wanted to make sure that it was highlighted and taken out of the equation for future growth and development. So the long and short of it is, we're in a position now where we can move forward with this project without tackling Martins Pond now or even in the near, near future, unless the town decides to move forward with it, when they think it'd be appropriate. But again, from a cash flow standpoint, what we're proposing now is a far better proposal than we could ever imagine.
No, I think, well, I think where you're going, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, was let's assume none of this happens, would there still be something that has to be done for the Martins Pond area, and what would that be? So in other words, something's got to happen there, regardless.
Something should happen there.
Right, okay.
So something, something should happen.
Right.
And what the state used to, was saying previously was, in order for you to address this issue, issue of sewerage, you must address this first.
Yeah.
They've changed their posture, and so something should happen there.
Okay.
It does not have to happen there.
Fair enough.
If we don't do anything, status quo is what you're looking at.
Yeah.
The status quo for the people who live down there has changed because when they had a septic system or a cesspool even at the time, now it's requiring tight tanks and different types of systems which have been developed, which are handling it differently.
So individuals who live there would have to do something regardless?
On an as-needed basis, as the situation is right now.
Right, okay.
As be addressed. So someone's down there, you know, bulldozing a home and rebuilding a new one and going from a one-bedroom cottage to a three-bedroom home, they have to...
There'd be, there'd be an additional cost anyway.
Oh, yes, significant cost. But again, to Mr. Gilberto's point, a few years back, you know, we were talking about some sort of a targeted area and treatment plant, and, you know, the betterments at the time were probably around $22,000 to $25,000. To be honest with you, we didn't do a very good job of marketing it and going out there and addressing the situations and the concerns. I mean, the numbers weren't going to change, and people would have to make, you know, an informed decision on their own, but there was an immediate uptick in concern, and the concern was turned into negative very quickly, and therefore, it wasn't, wasn't going to fly.
Understood.
I have a quick question, just on the, on the projection, so the 233,000 available for new growth, that's available for new growth along the route, right? You're not talking about new growth of the system elsewhere, you're saying that the existing flow that you're anticipating, the 186,000 is for the buildings and the houses that are there right now, and the new growth you're talking about is along that route? So if someone builds a multifamily project or anything else along the road?
The way, the way we presented it here, yes, it would be for along that route. Now, it could be that we go X number of years or even decades and it's not consumed that growth, that capacity and it's available. We could construct a Phase Two in Martins Pond, and it, you know, there's a demand for it there. There could be an expansion beyond what we've talked about in Phase One and Two to outside of those two phases, and there could be demand there as well. And if it's not, you know, utilized, then it would be available.
That would be new piping.
But again...
That's a whole nother project.
Correct. It's a whole nother project. When we, first, we're looking at this whole thing, we, if you're looking at an old map that we had probably from five or six years ago, we were talking about including, you know, Burdette Road, Eames Street, Nutter Road, all the way up to Southwick Road and beyond, up into what we call the acres, right? Luminav area, and Southwick Road, that area there. That was the first initial map we were looking at to take care of. And again, that has been shrunk based upon cost factors and trying to just get the system going up and running. So this 233, 34,000 gallons, you know, could allow us to expand into some of these other areas if the new growth on the car, you know, isn't gobbling it all up. So there is capacity. In addition to that, we're also designing the capacity of the system to have an increased flow of probably up to 700,000 to 750,000 gallons a day if we don't do anything else. So the piping that we're putting in the ground can take more capacity. We would have to go back to the state and get additional permitting above the 500,000.
But you wouldn't have to rip up the route to 112, 125?
Correct.
Into Andover and North Andover.
Correct. And if we did have to rip it up, that means we have a good problem, you know, as far as significant economic growth and development.
Your mileage may vary, but yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just a little bit about the cost estimates, and I'm not going to spend too much time on this, but I think as we're all familiar with what's gone on with the economy over the past couple of years, there has been an escalation in the costs, and part of it is driven to inflation, part of it is driven by the additional need for pump stations as well along the route to make sure we properly get the flow there. The total increase is a little over $16 million, which brings the total project cost for finalizing the design and for construction to $129,100,000. You'll see mixed in this, a number that is about $132 million at some points in time, that's adding in the money we already appropriated at last October's meeting, that $2.893 million.
Mr. Gilberto, can you break down also how much of that is a contingency of the total number versus what you think it could cost?
So there is a significant contingency that's built in. I'm going to actually ask the engineers if they might be able to just comment on that.
Besides the inflation, so, so one of the, the fourth row shows inflation to mid-point of construction. Construction's approximately going to be a three-year period, so we, using current inflation rates, around 5%, we estimated, and that has that total of 16, 15. And then we had put contingencies of like 30%, 25% to 30% within each of the unit prices for the gravity sewer, forced main, pump station, so those first three lines have contingencies. And the hope is as things progress, the design and during construction, if there's no change orders, that money would not be used, and then overall prices, project would be lower, meaning the betterment would be lower. But a lot unknown at this point, so you'd rather be slightly conservative to be safe.
It's going to save for...
Worst case, you made it worse.
Right.
I mean, in a way, like, just because, you know, any surprises, just outside surprises?
You know, because these are some, I mean, again, I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but there's some pretty, some pretty built-in kind of margins there for whatever.
And again, these, the projected costs that we have today are far better than we did a year ago when we got the $2.8 million. That $2.8 million allowed us to, again, we did, we've done borings basically along the entire route, all the way up to Andover, North Andover, which again, gives us a good idea as to what we're looking at in relation to construction costs and bedrock, and again, the updated cost in relation to the piping and infrastructure has already been factored in, as well as the additional contingency. So we're in a far better position in relation to the budget than we were a year ago. We were in good shape a year ago, we're in far better shape because of the $2.8 million that was allotted. In addition to that, did the market study to see what the potential future growth could be.
And this assumes no grants? This assumes that we don't use any money that we have in any piggy banks right now?
That's correct.
Sitting around? This assumes, this is the cost, not talking about how it's being paid for?
Correct. It was important for the, from the board's standpoint to ensure that, you know, we're going to give you the worst-case scenario as far as the costs associated with betterments and general operation costs could be absorbed by everybody, and then any other numbers that come in and any other funds that are received or utilized, just going to reduce the cost to everybody across the board.
So one of the things that we've been looking at is the debt. There's a significant amount of debt that would be associated with this, and in all likelihood, we would be borrowing for the entire amount minus any grant funds that we might be able to take advantage of. But right now, for discussion purposes, we've left it at the entire amount. And I'll just summarize, we sort of shortened this slide up, but our current debt limit under state law is $180 million. It can be doubled pretty readily through approval at the state level to 360, almost 361 million dollars. Right now, the total authorized but not yet issued, subject to the debt limit, is $15 million, which leaves us about $165 million under that normal debt limit of $180 million, and if you double it, it's about $345 million. So, you know, we started getting into this conversation, we started to drill down a bit at the numbers, and our bond council, our financial advisors, who were sort of saying, hey, look, you know, you have the capacity to do the project, the key is in the last bullet, you know, that's, that's one aspect of it, but the second piece is the town's ability to support the payment of additional debt service within our proposition two-and-a-half levy limit, or the need for additional revenues. So you'll see the financial model we talked about here calls for betterments to be assessed to the properties along the way, and it also includes a projection that would likely be presented as a debt exclusion to be decided by the town at an election, should town meeting approve this. And I'll get into those numbers in a few, just a few moments.
And just to clarify what you were just saying, so there's a special town meeting and then there would be a vote afterward?
So I don't want to...
Yes.
Say that that's been a decision that's been made, but the financial modeling that you're seeing is predicated upon, I would say this, it's predicated on a special town meeting vote, authorizing the borrowing for the project, and the assessment of the betterments. And right now, the financial model you see relies on additional revenue for, under a debt exclusion, in order to pay for the general funds portion of the debt service. And the reason for that is something that this committee is, you know, well aware of, that we just don't have the capacity to absorb that level of debt service within our existing tax levy.
And let me just ask one more question about that. You said you talked to your financial advisors about all that. Has there been any discussions with ratings agencies, or is it way too premature for that?
So we haven't talked directly with the rating agencies about this stage of it, but I can tell you it has come up in at least two of the last three rating calls that we've had, where they have said, hey, what's the story with the wastewater project? And we've been saying, you know, we were looking at it, now we have an appropriation to look at it from last October, and we're looking to bring something forward. The other side of that is, you know, we sold the Polte property, which resulted in a significant influx of restricted funds, I kind of thought we might be able to get some credit for that with the rating agencies, and what we really got was they wanted an answer about what we're going to do with it.
Right.
And, you know, that's something that we'll have to make as a decision from a policymaking standpoint. We did use 2.893 million of it for this planning effort, which was a lot of the funds. But when I brought up to them, I said, look, we, you know, to our advisors, we have a projection that shows significant property tax revenues that are generated by this project, and the response was that that would likely be a strong consideration that rating agencies would consider as they were looking at our rating assignment in the context of this project. And we do have a significant prediction, which again, I'll get to, for revenue that I think some of you have probably already seen.
Yep.
So it's, it's difficult to predict exactly, but I do think we have good answers to many of the questions that would come up in a rating call about this.
Mr. Studo?
And what I'd like to add about that too is that, you know, just like when you have a high personal credit score, the point to keep it high is so then when you have to make a big purchase or do something that is out of the ordinary, I mean, you know, it's not like, you know, buying a dump truck, which we need every few years, it's more of a bigger, that you have that, you've worked towards that. So meaning that, I think one argument that could theoretically be heard over the next month is that, well, what if we did this and then our rating goes down? Well, that's like saying, I'm not going to buy a new house because my credit score's going to temporarily fall 10 points. So what's the point? So just something to keep in mind that, you know, I feel like there's, you know, it could be a sensitive topic because you work so hard to get there, but again, I see it that that's the point, to have a strong bond rating because North Reading's done it the right way, so then if the voters do decide, we can get a preferential interest rate on this borrowing. So I just wanted to add that, because I know I've already heard it, that, well, if we do it, what does that do? And it's like, well then, what's the point in having the high credit score?
Thank you, appreciate that.
Just one of the other points that we've been making is that, sure, Mr. Gilberto will get into this when it comes to the betterments. You know, the betterments are on those properties that are along the route, and so each one of those properties is going to be assessed, and basically a municipal lease will be put up on. For those betterments, who will be paid to the town, you know, as the sale of the properties take place, the betterment gets paid off. You know, we'll be financing it for people over 30 years at a 5% interest rate. If they want to stay there for 30 years, that's okay, they'll be paid off over 30 years. But should the property be sold, town gets paid off in full, just like any other municipal lease. So what we've been discussing, this part of our modeling again, is giving ourselves the ability to pay down that portion of the debt sooner for the 30 years, because the betterments come in because they're not going to come in on an even flow of cash flow. So we have at least two opportunities that we know of to refinance that portion of the debt, and I think it's important for people to realize, you know, it's our goal, not to carry this forever and a day, but to get it paid off as soon as possible, and we're looking at every feasible option we got to do that, and it's the betterment portions that are going to be paid off sooner. For a single-family home, the new averages, people stay there for 13 years before it turns over. Usually seven or eight, now it's 13 years. So every 13 years, they turn over. So as that happens, we're going to be getting big chunks of change coming in here, paying off the betterments. We're hoping to refinance the debt and pay it down, you know.
Is that the same for commercial properties? Do they, can they finance it over 30 years as well?
Correct.
Yes. I'll continue. I'll go quickly through this, this just kind of describes the scope of work, and Mr. Perici has put hundreds of hours into both the scope and then reviewing it, but we put together a pretty detailed scope of work for our consultants to work on over the past year, including understanding how much the water use is, how that water use would translate to apportionment of the costs amongst the different classes of property, residential and commercial industrial. They also helped... They also helped us out with the draft of the sewer betterment bylaw amendments, which were approved at the June town meeting. The property valuation and new growth analysis. So this is work that some of you may be familiar with from 2010, 11, and 12, where we had a projection done on new growth associated with having wastewater on Main Street and Concord Street. I think we delved a bit further into that number, and tried to better understand how development might happen. And there was a methodology that was developed by a subconsultant, FXM, who worked for Kleinfelder, to identify what a growth projection might be along the route. So I'm just gonna stop for just a moment. We're transitioning into the work of the consultant here, which we'll present for you. I probably will move somewhat quickly through the slides to kind of get to the bottom lines of the dollar amounts, but I think you all have the extended mutation from-
Yeah.
-Mr. Buckley, so I appreciate you sending that out.
Yes.
But just a note for those who might be in the audience or watching at home, we have been conducting outreach in the form of visits like this to public meetings, including the finance committee, the select board, the planning commission, the economic development committee, this committee. We had a community workshop in this room last Tuesday evening, and we have another one that's more targeted to the residents along the route here in this room tomorrow evening. So if you're at home, watching this, or listening, certainly, if you live along the route, we encourage you to come here at 7:00 on Tuesday, October 18th, to learn more about the project, to ask questions, to certainly be heard. There'll be a similar opportunity for businesses along the route as well, 'cause it's a bit of a different impact, but nonetheless, a betterment impact on those businesses a week from tomorrow night, same time and same location. So, just a little bit of background, again, we talked about promoting economic development, the limitations on multifamily housing on Main Street, and the public health and environmental protection issues. I've talked about betterment. I'm just gonna, just for the purposes of those who might not know, it's a special property tax that's permitted where a special benefit or advantage is received from the construction of a public improvement. In this case, we're talking about sewer. There's two categories of that. There's general benefit facilities, such as pump stations, trunk sewers, and force mains. And then there's special benefit facilities, which are more the pipe right in front of your house, or the main, generally gravity main, that might be connecting to a larger pipe. So those are the two categories of costs. And you'll see why that comes through in just a moment. Again, this is something that becomes a lien on a property, which is determined once all the project costs are finalized. It can be, it can be paid upfront when it's assessed, or it can be paid over the bonding period, which we are anticipating will likely be a 30-year bonding period. Decision hasn't been made yet, but that's the modeling that we utilized. If the property's sold, the lien is required to be paid off. It's like selling your house and having property taxes due, or a water bill or trash bill that's not paid, due at the time of the sale, in order to transfer the property. Just, it's the same, this is the route map, only oriented with north being at the top, rather than being on the right-hand side. And you see all the parcels that are impacted, and there are a few surprises, I think, when you look in there, and that's due to the size of the parcel that's abutting the property. If you look on the left-hand side, where Wilmington is written on the screen, you can see the portions of the evental property that are there. It's a really large parcel. Another parcel, just to the right of that, is the town hall property, which would also be bettered. And you see right below that, there are two multifamily properties, Edgewood and Polte Homes in New England. If you keep going down, it sort of extends right through down to Main Street by making a hard turn to the right. That's a post office property. It's a deep parcel that goes all the way back, almost to the back of the Polte property. So, there are some larger parcels. There are wetland issues on some of them, so the development potential is certainly limited. But when, if you look at it and you say, well, that's a lot of land, that's the reason, is because it's showing the parcels that abut or front the proposed construction route. The same's going on down into the south on Concord Street, where you see that sort of really large area to the north of the green line, down by the Redding Town Line, and to the south of it as well, it kind of makes an S. Those two areas, again, there's a lot of wetland in those areas, but there are parcels that front Concord Street.
It'd be very nice to own the property right at the corner there, wouldn't it?
And again, all of the parcels abutting the proposed sewer main may be assessed a betterment to help cover the costs of the project. You're gonna hear some discussion about so-called residential opt-out, and we'll talk about that in a moment, but this is just showing all of the parcels that abut the route. The select board is required to make some determinations with regard to this in their role as overseeing the betterment. Their decisions are bound by, or they, I should say, they are restricted by the betterment bylaw, which I think you're all familiar with from that June town meeting, state law, which addresses this, and then also the cost of the project itself. We have assumptions that we've used that you'll see throughout this, but the major decision points that are out there, including whether to allow residential properties to opt-out or not, those have not been made at this point. The select board's scheduled to have a preliminary discussion of that at their meeting this evening, but I don't anticipate that any final decisions will be made at this point in time, as we're still getting feedback from those along the route. I'll just note, you know, again, how, one of the things also is how much of it gets assigned to betterment versus how much of it gets assigned to the taxpayer, and then also the method, which you'll see we did based upon the, we used water use as a way to do it, because we felt if you just did it as a baseline on that 186,000 gallons per day, that was the fairest way to sort of try to run the calculation, rather than making assumptions about Title V that might not be real right now, or about land area for that matter. So I think we felt the water calculation was the best indicator of how much wastewater would be going back into the system today. And any development above and beyond that, any additional flow, would require additional buy-in, if you will, to the system, so that it would be required to be paid for. We'll get to that as well. So this is a graphic here that just kind of shows the way things work, and we show up on the top, number one in the yellow, other revenue sources. So that would be grant funding that might come in to defray how much is being passed along to be financed. Number two is the cost of the project, which again, is roughly $129 million. Then you move through to how much of that can be assessed, and the way you assess it. So at stage three, that total cost gets divided up into general benefit facilities, which again, is largely the force main to get to the plant in North Andover. That's a big part of it. There's also a pretty large pump station that would be required to move all of the flow up through that. And then there are the special benefit facilities, which are more the neighborhood-based pipes. And are there portions of some of the pump stations in the special benefit as well? Or is it all? It's all, so that's all in the general benefit?
All the general.
Okay. And then, when you go through and break that down, that special benefit facility, you get the portion that needs to be assessed as a betterment, right? And that gets carried through as a betterment assessment to the property along the route. On the general benefit size, side of it, there's two components, and I'm gonna start with the part on the right, where the number four is, the portion that's assessed as betterment, which is based, again, on that, that current utilization, the current use of the property. And then there's the privilege fees, which is the amount that's new, right? Basically, growth. Any development that happens to increase the demand on the wastewater system by any of the parcels along, along the route as well. You see that part on the left, where there's the arrow pointing to it, because that's, those privilege fees and that development hasn't happened yet, on this model, it's the taxpayer that's asked to pay for it. And that's what, what ends up flowing through to become the potential debt exclusion amount. So, we'll get to exactly what, what these numbers mean, but this gives you just sort of a visual of how we found our way to the costs for, for each site.
Two questions on timing. So number one, with grants, if it came in, because Mr. earlier was talking about, you know, refinancing the future if we get money in, would we know about the grants? I know we won't know before the town meeting, but will we know about the grants that we don't have to take out as much upfront? Or would this be more, while we're doing it, we might get grants? And then the second, the second one would be a similar thing, where like, if, you know, these privilege fees are used later on, how quickly would the impact of the taxpayer be lessened if all of a sudden, there's more of it being paid by, you know, commercial properties?
Sure. So, on the issue of, you know, when, when would the grants kind of be known to us? I think we all wanted to be able to come into a special town meeting, saying, here's the grant amounts that are out there. And what we're finding is many of the grant funding sources are saying, identify a private partner who wants to develop and create housing or jobs along the route. And so, as we've gone to do some of those conversations, they've said, well, how serious are you about the project? You know, are you ready to go forward with it? So, the way it's probably going to play out is, we'd be going to a town meeting, seeking authorization to go forward with the project, probably get some more, we hope, and we expect to get some more direct feedback from property owners that are looking to go forward with development, that will then leverage the ability to find those grant funding sources. So we may be doing a short-term borrowing, which ends up carrying us through until we have answers on grants. And then we go to initially long-term borrow, we're reducing the amount that we're borrowing on. There's some provisions in state law that allow us to borrow, I should say state and or federal law, that allow us to say, okay, at some period of time, probably nine years out, we're gonna basically refinance this, at which point, we could potentially pay down whatever the principal is. Those are sort of the points in time where we can adjust the amount we're borrowing for. On the grants, it's tough to know exactly what the timing could be. We could get, you know, put a grant application two years from now and get it in, and we may not be able to sort of refinance until a later point in time. But I think our hope is to deal, to deal with a lot of that in the period where we are short-term borrowing and before we initially long-term borrow. Mr. Sudo, did you have something to add?
Yeah, because you mentioned the word refinance. I don't know if in this presentation we'll get there, but all our numbers are based on the assumption of a 30-year at 5%. Right now, based on our credit score, a 30-year muni bond is only between 4 and 4 and 1/4. So we've added 75 basis points to 1% higher, and that's a lot on 129 million. So just, again, presenting not just worst case, I mean, we're just projecting out that at first, depending on where rates go, that we might end up with a portion of the borrowing closer to a rate that doesn't even exist right now. And I think, my professional opinion, long-term rates, I don't think are going to get to five. But, another thing just to add in, so these numbers, even if nothing else except general economics, like of what, where the rates are, if everything else stood and we didn't get a dollar, I still anticipate that you should have a lower cost of borrowing, just because we're assigning a higher interest rate, that, I'm not saying couldn't happen, but would be, a lot would need to happen for us to have a rate above five over the next 30 years. That's the best way I can put it. So I just want to point that out.
Sure. Did that answer your question, Scott?
Yeah, on the first one. And then the second one with if, you know, if privileges are, it's the same sort of thing, where like, would it just be whenever we refinance, or would tax rates potentially come down as-
Sure.
-more, you know, more people buy in or buy privileges?
So that's something, there's gonna be a debt payment that's gonna need to be paid each year on this. And, you know, like, we decide how we're gonna balance the budget, including our debt payments each year, we would be looking at what's available for resources to do that. So if we saw an increase in betterment revenue, it would be an additional funding source that we could apply to debt service and potentially bring down that portion that would need to be carried by the taxpayer. So, you know, in theory, and I'm gonna kind of look to the folks to my right, 'cause I, you know, there's, there's a lot, a lot of moving parts with this, but if you were to build the project, and it were to be, it were to be built out at 100%, you shouldn't have any taxpayer implication on it, right? Because you've moved all of that cost over to, to the, both the general and special benefit resources. But that's, that's not something that can happen instantaneously, nor is it, nor is it something we're necessarily projecting will happen, but we are showing what it could look like if it did happen. But the bottom line is, until the development happens, it's, it's left to the taxpayer to support it.
And just in terms of timing, when do you guys have to leave today?
We, I probably should be planning to leave no later than 6:35 or 6:40.
Okay. Just because I know that you have other stuff, we've had it, I know you also wanted our thoughts, I think, and questions, and so, I don't know if you wanna, I don't know how much you wanna keep going versus asking for your comments.
I'm gonna get to the, I'm gonna get to the big numbers.
Yep.
And then we-
Go ahead.
... go from there, if that's all right.
Yeah.
So, again, we talked about the model that we used, which was basically based upon estimated wastewater contributions. This slide just shows how we calculated what the water use was. You know, we used three years' worth of data. The average single-family home being 130 gallons per day, that's an important number, because if you think about Title V, so if it's a three-bedroom home, it would be 110 gallons per bedroom, or 330 gallons per day. So, when we, when we ran the models using that number, we went way past the actual number of gallons available, because we only have 503,000 gallons available to us. So, we ended up using this water calculation. Just something to note, you know, the unit that we use is one, and that's a single-family residential home. .75 is the amount that was assigned to condos, because there are condos that are along the route, both on Main Street and on, on Lower Road. So we talked about decision points and the base model assumptions. I won't go too far anyway, but I'll just say that the stuff that's kind of in the gold block there is something that will be discussed with regard to the select board and having an initial discussion on it this evening, ultimately needing to come to some sort of conclusion, I think, for a recommendation at town meeting, for town meeting to consider. So, when you break down the cost, it ends up being, on the very bottom there, about $69 million that would be assessed through betterment, and roughly $60 million that would be paid by the general funds.
Assuming no opt-outs.
That assumes no opt-outs. That's correct. And this just shows the, the average per parcel, the one that I think most folks are interested in, or the two are on the left-hand side, the single-family home. There's a $46,000 betterment assessment, and if you're in a condominium, again, using that .75 calculation, it's roughly $35,000 gallons, $35,000, and to be assessed over the 30-year period. The mixed use is the one where there's the most variance, because you just don't know what the makeup would be. That's 186,000. And then you see the commercial and industrial are at $87,000 and $63,000.
Quick, Mr. Sudo. I'm gonna make it a little quick, but I just, you know, since I am in a room full of academics, or representative of thereof, let's not forget that there's a reason it's called a betterment, because it makes it better. I think people, too much is being said that like, well, I'm getting a betterment, what do I get out of it? It's kind of an oxymoron, so.
And we'll speak briefly to that, too, as well. We broke this down just into a monthly cost, which I think, just for folks to understand what it might mean to their, you know, if they have a mortgage, what the payment would be. It's roughly $250 for the single-family home, or $190 a month for a condominium. So we talked about the debt, again, using betterments, existing property value increasing the tax levy. So that's something that's important that Mr. Sudo was just speaking to, which is, soon as the pipe is available, without pulling a single building permit to improve a property, there is an improvement made to that property, and in all likelihood, an improvement in its value, too. Yes, it's offset by whatever the betterment amount might be, but that improvement in value is what actually allows for an impact on the tax rate, because in the end, as I think you all know through the budget process, we're limited by Proposition Two and a Half for our annual tax revenue. When you create additional value in a particular property, it actually moves to push the rate down, which is to the benefit of the other taxpayers in the community. New growth, so that's just new revenue. So somebody took out a building permit and built a restaurant, or they built a mixed-use building, and it created value, that goes above and beyond the existing tax levy and its role into the tax levy year over year over year, moving forward. Again, that's, I talked about the residential portion of it, there's a commercial portion of it as well, that we have projections on. And then again, talking about alternative revenues, you know, grants, we talked about the land sale, and that's a reference to funding from the Polte project, which could be utilized to control the impact of debt service in the early years before we're getting a lot of betterment revenue. So just kind of doing the quick calculation, on the average single-family home in North Reading, right now, the projection would be a $660 increase in the annual tax bill for the general fund portion. So, we're just kind of boiling it down to single-family taxpayers. If you're along the route and you own a single-family home, $46,000 spread out over 30 years, roughly $250 a month. For all the other property in town, if you're living on the east side of town, or living, you know, in the central part of the town, and you're in a single-family home, at the average valuation, it'd be a $660 increase in your tax bill, but you would not be assessed a betterment, and you would not be able to connect to the sewer line, because we would not be constructing it in front of your home.
Better, better properties also pay the tax.
So that $660 is also applied to-
The better property.
So that $660 is also applied to single-family homes along the route, that's an important point, thanks, Scott. So, we talked about some of the projections that we did, just to come down to it, FXM determined that there's sufficient demand within the market area to absorb projected commercial square footage potential, and the number of units that were projected. This is for long-term planning purposes, to try to understand what revenue might be able to be generated. And I just want to point out, you know, some of the numbers that are here, namely, you know, we talked about potential value. If you look the upper-right-hand side, the total, 190 million, $55,000 in new value, so that's the increase in the value of the properties along the route, before they actually do any construction or make any changes to them. Down below is new growth, again, which I described as something that's separate and above and beyond the existing tax levy. You see that we're projecting tax revenues of $13.537 million based upon property value. So I have a different slide that will show that a little bit differently. Though, on the left, you're seeing the non-residential, on the right, you're seeing the residential with that number of 1,300 units, which, you know, has been a point of question and discussion, you know, do we want 1,300 new units? Maybe, maybe not. You know, is there room for that 1,300 units? We believe in the market that there is, based on the study, but is there a sufficient land area? That's something that would need to flush itself out over the life of the project. So just showing some numbers here, and the numbers, they range a lot, but what we tried to show is basically, okay, how much are we paying for this project over the life of the life of it? This is on the taxpayer's standpoint. So we haven't included anything on the betterment on here. That left to be better to the properties that are along the route, they have the value of, they have the benefit of the additional value on their property and the ability to connect, we're separating that. We're focusing only on the taxpayers' portion here. So, that $133 million is actually the general funds portion of the whole project, principal and interest. So that's where that number came from. And we tried to show, okay, well, how much new growth are we gonna get over the life of the project? If you have 100% of the residential and commercial build-out over those 30 years, it's 400, almost $441 million in new growth to the tax levy over the course of the, over the 30 years. If you reduce those numbers down, we'll just say 25% of what was projected for market demand for growth, you get a number that's around 110 million. And I think we figured it's about 30% in each category gets you to the sort of breakeven standpoint. So if a little less than a third of what the projection said could happen, happened over the 30 years, you'd be at a little over $130 million in revenue. I should just point out, this is all based upon a projection of even growth. We know there'll be variance, some years there'll be a lot of growth, and it's happened with Pulte, some years there'll be less growth. So, I did just want to kind of put it out here on a slide, showing you, you know, what does that mean on an annual basis. So if you think about, you know, grabbing any particular fiscal year in isolation, 2027 happens to be year one of new growth. And if you were to break down at 100% of the projection, meaning all of the construction that could happen on the market demand, it would be a $556,000 increase to our operating budget and revenue. That number begins to compound itself, because we expect it would be development over multiple years, it grows by 2.5% when it gets put into the tax levy. So you see, just a few years out, you're talking in the tens of millions of dollars in new growth that happens. We just selected a few years, we didn't show the whole 30 years. Scott, you might have seen one with the 30-year outline, it was a lot of lines to look at, we just sort of pulled out every five years to show what it would look like. Again, getting to that $441 million. I just, you know, put up here, something for comparison purposes, you know, doing the same exercise with the Pulte project, which generated significant growth for us, you know, was projected to show us about, you know, up to $3 million per year. You see what happened there, we had a little bit of growth in the first year, and then when it was compounded and added to growth in the second year and the third year, you know, we'll very quickly get to what ends up being just over $2 million in new growth revenue every year that we receive. And I know that folks in this room, you know, and on this committee, have been part of conversation where we've talked about, you know, we've kind of always had something available to us to continue the new growth trend. And Pulte is the most recent iteration of it, going back the past five to 10 years. It was Edgewood, I think, prior to that, that was a similar period of time as well. And so just, we wanted to put that out there as sort of a sample of, okay, you know, what does new growth actually mean? And often, it's what allows us to maintain what we're doing in the town's budget, because of the financial pressures. And it's also what allows us to add our resources when we need to. So, I think I've reached the end here. I'm not gonna go through the frequently asked questions, because I think we've talked a lot about it, but, again, I'll just point out, for those who are watching at home or here in the audience, there is an information session tomorrow night, here in this room, the Distance Learning Lab in the Middle High School, at 7 o'clock PM. We also have a website, sewer@northreadingma.gov, if you have any questions. That's, sorry, that's the email, sewer@northreadingma.gov, and we have a link right off of the town's homepage, at www.northreadingma.gov.
Thank you. Sicoberto.
We should shut up.
I have lots of comments, but I'm gonna, I'll give you my thoughts, but I'm gonna open up to other people, if you guys have questions or thoughts.
I know there's limited time, too, right? So, and some of my questions are more related to my, you know, not role. But I'm looking at that, 1,300 new units, that's where I see like an impact, potential impact for schools, and what that would look like over time, and sure everyone else noticed that as well. And do we have the capacity within the schools?
Just for Larry.
In relation to that, one of the biggest needs that our community has right now is, and we're working, one of our initiatives is the age-friendly initiative that we're working on, too, so that, you know, people can stay and age in the community, people now are overhoused, you know, and we have little or no inventory for them to go and stay in town. As you're well aware, a large number, segment of the population are coming to this community because of the school system, the high rating that we have, and money that we've invested and continue to invest here, and they want to come here and educate their kids, and then they leave.
Right.
I mean, it's a mass exodus that's taking place right now. In addition to that, people of, you know, my generation and even older, you know, have been here for a significant amount of time, again, we're overhoused. Again, we don't have much of the way of accessory dwelling units where people can age place in their home, which the Planning Commission is working on. And in addition to that, we believe that this particular proposal will allow for planned growth and development of housing which can specifically address empty nesters.
Right. So you're saying of those...
But it's important to recognize that we want people like me and my wife, you know, to stay here, because we don't have kids in the school system now, and we're gonna pay the full boat on the taxes, and not necessarily have, you know, 2/3 of our tax dollars which go to schools, you know, supporting other things and supporting the school system. So that if we can increase the housing number of housing users, specifically targeted towards, you know, empty nesters, and create economic development where people won't want to stay here in North Reading, because we would be able to offer amenities like, you know, restaurants and places to gather, and things of that nature, which is all part of a planning process that we're already talking about and working on, this stuff turns perfectly.
Right, no, I, that makes perfect sense. So of those 1,300 new units, would there be, are they specifically for 55 plus?
No, nothing here is specific.
Right, no, I'm just saying, you know...
But again, how we develop that, and how we allow for that type of development, will be up to town meeting. You know, through zoning proposals and zoning changes going along the corridor. So, you know, it's not the select board, it's not the planning board specifically, it's, you know, proposals put forth through the planning board and the select board to help address the current needs. Keep in mind, you know, a lot of the grants that are now available are tied to communities meeting their housing needs. We've done a woefully inadequate job of doing so right now. Planning Commission is in the process of developing a methodology to address the new legislation, which has just been put into place, I think, for a lot of this past year, which, basically, you're not gonna get any state grant money unless you're at the housing needs. So we can do that through zoning, but from a practical standpoint, we can't implement it, because we don't have sewage. You know, we just don't have the capacity to handle the wastewater associated with the number of housing units that we're required to zone for and allow to happen. So we can, we can put up a good face here and do some zoning changes, oh, we're gonna allow this over here, here, and here, but from a practical standpoint, it's never gonna happen. And we have an obligation to meet the regional needs that we're unable to do right now. This particular project will allow us to do it, we can do it in a measured approach, and again, we can do it in a targeted approach to help address the real needs of getting people to stay in the community, which is gonna help.
Also, it is over, like a lot of things in these projects, in this project, it is over 30 years. So, when you start, again, I'm not saying that it's likely, I don't know how North Reading will expand, but it's not out of the question over 30 years, adding 1,300 units is, I mean, I don't know what it will look like. It's, you know, when you divide it out over 30 years, it's just not a big number, especially if, like Mr. O'Leary alluded to, if you get one big, like, 250 unit for housing that is mostly gonna be used for people with no kids, right? That takes a chunk, so, just like most things here, I feel like, when it's looked at from a short timetable, it's like, ugh, but like, once you kind of put it out, it's like, it just changes the, it's like context.
Again, between the two projects at the end of Lower Road there, you know, right on Lower Road, I mean, you've got 500 units of Pulte, and you've got 406 units at Edgewood. You've got, so, over 900 units right there that we've built in one concentrated area. And again, the impact, I don't know what we have, it actually came from Edgewood, but it's, you know...
But those two projects, but those two projects are the classic example on both ends of those spectrums, right? Because the Edgewood project is unrestricted, as far as I remember.
No, there's some affordable units in there, affordable two- and three-bedroom units in there, and, but again, it's rental.
Right.
So it's a little more transit. And again, for Pulte, there was an over 55. But just to give you an idea, I mean, right there, there's 900 units.
So the Pulte project is perfect, in terms of its impact on the schools, the Pulte project is perfect. Obviously, it's possible that a, that a school-aged child could be in a Pulte unit, but it's much less likely than, than in an Edgewood unit, for instance, and certainly, and, yeah. So, I mean, that's the, that's the balance that the town has to strike in order to make it work, for schools and for everybody else.
And when Mr. O'Leary sells his house, though, then kids move into that house, too.
Right, but they're gonna move in anyway.
Correct, correct. But you keep, you stay.
Whereas I could move to a Pulte, continue to pay taxes on a $500,000 assessed condominium, you know, and not put a kid in the school system. And, again, as this economic development takes place, it helps support the local businesses that are coming here and growing. Because, again, none of this economic development's gonna take place unless you have people, right, to support it. And, so it kind of dovetails nicely.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump into some of my thoughts quick. So, I think the biggest decision still to be made by, by the select board is about the opt-outs. And I will tell you personally...
About the what?
The opt-outs, whether or not residential properties along the route can opt out of the betterment. And I will tell you, and this is just me speaking personally, personally, I would not support the project if residential units are not allowed to opt out. I would support the project if they are allowed to opt out. And so, and to me, the main reason for this is, this is for a commercial, the reason we're doing this is to develop 28 in commercial, and so...
Not necessarily.
Well, residential and commercial on 28. The target of this is not the, not the single family that lives on Park Street, and I think the betterment to the person on Park Street of $46,000, plus the $12,000, the $30,000 to tie into that, plus the increase to their tax, I think that is too much for the individual owner that is there. I think it would be better to, I understand that that means the general fund would go from 660 to 1,080 in the average, but I think that is a more fair appropriation of that. And so, with somebody that's not on the route myself, I would support the project with me paying more of that project if the residential people do not have to do that. I feel like, and just, again, that's just a fairness and equity thing, in my opinion, I just think that the owners, the properties along this route that are single families are just, I don't know that the value of the property would go up by the same amount, and I think it would severely impact the equity that a lot of those owners have in their houses. And, so, that's my concern about if those units are not allowed to opt out. I have concerns about the project overall, but I would just say, I will support it, because I sit through finance planning team, and I see that, you know, expenses go up more than the revenues go up every year. I see how much we've been, you know, bailed out by the Pulte project, by this new growth. And so I think we need to do something different, and so I think the idea of development on 28 and Concord Street is, is potentially lifesaving for the town. And so I, I think it's, there's a lot still to be determined, and I don't know what the ROI is gonna be on that, but I'm willing to, you know, to support that part of it. You know, that's, I, I think there's a larger, I don't think it's just a simple, if you build it, they will come, I think you do need to build the residences as well, to get those, but, you know, bottom line is, I, I would support the project personally, but I, my concern is with those residences, if they're not allowed to opt out, I think that's, you know, unfair, and that's where I personally stand, and I don't know what other people think, but I think you guys were looking for feedback, and that's my, my big thing when I look through this. I mean, I think there's, there's a lot to, you know, I want a better downtown, I want a better 28 Concord, I want to keep you in town, Mr. O'Leary. But, you know, I, I just think for the single-family home there, I think, I personally, if we're gonna do a worst-case scenario, I personally would show it with everybody opted out, and say, might be a $1,000 increase to everybody's taxes, you know, and some people are gonna tie in, and there might be grant money, and some people might pay it back earlier, so it might not be that bad. But that's where I would start, and I would support that project. I don't think it's fair on the other end, so.
Fair enough.
So, anybody else have thoughts they want to share, or comments they want to make?
Just to build upon that, I mean, I do think, as part of your discussions and meetings and things, if, what, if we could understand what, I agree with Scott in terms of opt-out must be an option, but what percentage of residents do you think would realistically opt out? Like, has that been, I, I, that would be something I'd be curious about.
Keep in mind that the vast majority of residential taxpayers on this particular route are condominium owners.
Okay.
So like, you know, like, take a Pulte, you take Greenbrier, you take Park Colony, and then there's a spattering of half a dozen other different small condo units, smaller units. So the vast majority of residential property owners who may be given an opportunity to opt out would be those condo units. Again, if they were allowed to opt out, there would be a provision, though, that if their wastewater treatment plant failed, you know, or their individual septic systems failed, they must tie in.
I was gonna ask about that, for those, for those large projects.
Right, so in other words, they can force...
Is that something, is that something...
They can force stall it.
Right.
But again, as a residential taxpayer, they're also gonna share in that other burden that the general fund is gonna take care of. Instead of 660, it'd be $1,080 on an average family home. So they're gonna pay it one way or the other, just less of an impact. And, and again, the impact on the condominium association and the owners is very different. Obviously, a Pulte property condominium is $500, $600,000. You know, Park Colony might be $200, $250,000. And a $35,000 assessment heats in significantly to people's equity. So we're very much aware and cognizant of it, and we understand that, you know, it's a difficult decision, especially for the individual property owner, but for the board, too, in assessing, you know, how can we get this project, first of all, get people to buy in that it's, it's a true opportunity for this community that I've never seen in my lifetime presenting itself. And, do we want to take advantage of it and allow this generation and future generations the opportunity to grow? We'll grow in a measured approach, the town meeting will decide as to how it's gonna happen. So how do we do that? So again, to share more of the costs through the general fund is an option.
But again, that's just, just my thought, I just, you know, looking at it and understanding, it just, because it's not, like you said, $35,000 for the condo, and then there's the cost to actually tie in, and, again, the condo unit would be less, but...
But for a condo, you know, the tie-in isn't that, that big a deal.
It won't be as much for condos.
It's not a bigger deal.
Correct. But for an individual family, it would be, and that's where it's like, yeah, that's, that's my concern on it, honestly, and I think that's where a lot of, I think that's where a lot of community members' concerns are going to be. But, go ahead, Diana.
I just wanted to make a comment that, like, for me, someone not on the route, it's like, yeah, this would be great for the town, we'd love to see the development and everything that comes, and I support it. But then, you know, if I was in their shoes, has there been any surveying to say, do you want this? Like, for the people that are impacted, for the people that have the betterment, do you have a sense of that percentage of people, the percentage that actually want this? Because, you know, as a human being, it's hard for me to sit here and say, I want, I want it, but you all have the impact of it.
The short answer is no, we don't. I mean, we've done surveying, but the response has been, you know, like most surveys that...
Not a lot of...
Response rate.
Not a lot of, not a lot of response.
Right.
But this is why we're having these community workshops, to get out there, and we have specific ones for residents in the area and businesspeople in the area, where we can address their individual concerns and say, this is where you live, this is what it's gonna cost you.
And I want, if it's gonna improve my property, I should want that, and I would expect that it would be a larger percentage of people that would want that betterment, because it makes it better, to your point, but we don't know if that's the case.
Also, I'd just like to add two points on that. There were more than this past one, but at the June town meeting, we did vote, and the ones that did, everyone knew that was on the ballot, and if you were really concerned about the town forcing it on you, it was a pretty funny way to show for it, because you didn't show up at town meeting to vote against the article.
So if you were concerned, do you...
But I'm just saying, that's, again, it can be that maybe, but that, but that has But I'm just saying, that's, again, it can be that maybe, but that but that has to be said, that the, that if I was really concerned that there could be a chance that, 'cause it is the truth. If the majority of the town, which does not live on the route, wants this, it's going to go through. I mean, let's just be honest here. And also, I'd like to add that, and this is more technical, and we'll get to it in another, I mean, it's part of the presentation, but if you eventually tie in, you didn't exactly save anything because of the privilege fees. So meaning, you're gonna pay as if it was from day one. So it's meaning that we just wanna make it clear to everyone that eventually, to your point, let's say you decide to tie in, Scott, you're paying like it was day one, even if it's three years later. So it's just so, but I think naturally, you would think that wouldn't be the case, but it, like, that's that's something. So people are gonna have to make a decision that it's like, well, maybe one day I'll tie in, that will be part of it. So I just wanted to clear.
No, no, I appreciate that. I I don't, I don't agree with the characterization of the vote on the town meeting because a lot of that was, we're just giving the ability to make this decision in the future, and the town and the select board has not yet made that determination. And there were, and I don't think everybody understood what that was. Again, you guys are the select board, you guys can do whatever, I'm.
To that point, you know, I made the pitch at town meeting. And my pitch was, you know, we want the two-point-eight million dollars to get some more definitive answers to it. To really, we have an opportunity here, we need this two-point-eight million dollars to get some more definitive answers to see what the actual costs are gonna be so you can make a well-informed decision.
Correct.
And.
It was not saying we're agreeing to the betterment.
That's what the Pulte board was deciding for, things just such as this.
Correct.
Again, we appreciate the support that we received there. And again, I didn't take that vote as necessarily a buy-in for the program.
Correct, yes.
It's just as an opportunity, so.
Yeah, well, and again, I appreciate.
I don't mind hanging around, but.
And I appreciate the work that you guys have all put into this, and.
Absolutely.
You know, again, I appreciate the information, I appreciate you coming and hearing our our opinions and.
From the school committee's vantage point, the town as a whole, obviously, this impacts our ability to borrow. It'll impact capital projects moving forward because, you know, if we take on this debt, something else is gonna have to be put off a little bit.
That is a big issue.
So that.
Wait, what?
Oh, so I mean, you're paying, you're paying an important role here as far as your input and as far as hopefully your support, but also in making the community as a whole understand that, you know, there are certain sacrifices and choices we have to make at times, and this opportunity is presenting itself, either we should or shouldn't take advantage of it. And as I said in the earlier meeting, you know, just look at what we have out there on twenty-eight and Concord Street now. It hasn't changed in years, you know? So if we're okay with that, okay. You know, and again, we're not trying to sell anybody on anything, just, here's the information, this is what it's gonna cost, this is what it's gonna cost you, what it's gonna cost me. And if you're okay with what the community looks like now, and you're satisfied with that, okay. But if you're not, provide some opportunities. This is, this is the only route to doing. We've reached our own part of twenty-eight out there, nothing's happened.
Well, this this puts control in our hands, though. Doesn't necessarily mean things have to change, but it allows us the opportunity to change. That's what this investment is. So, you know, anybody who's out there that's worried about like, oh, we're gonna change the complexion of the town, and I don't want it to look like Andover, and I don't want it to, well, this gives us the opportunity to control that because there is no control if you don't do anything.
And also, if you look at this point, I've been joking since the first time I wanted to support this a year ago. Right now, our part of Main Street looks like the linway for Lawson. We have become the exception. Look around every town. North Reading is now the exception of, this is no longer, no one else has it, no, we are one of the only ones who do not. So now we, that's, you know, just, again, I mean.
Just one more comment.
Yeah, and and I mean, but but to me, it's even beyond that. I just think overall, looking at the expenses in the town, we need to be thinking about new growth because things cost more every year, and if we don't do that, and, you know, again, there's, I had other questions on. For for future, about, you know, like, if we ever want to develop a different commercial tax rate, you know, you have to have businesses in town, and we have to look at, I mean, from a school board or from a school committee, I mean, one of our main roles is looking at how to continue to fund these schools. And, you know, a lot of the property tax goes to funding the schools. And so I think, you know, increasing new growth is something we have to think about. And and again, but like, to me, the equity issue on the opt-out is my biggest concern, and I said that.
Yeah, and I, and just, and again, regarding the schools, I mean, we're very lucky in this town that that the school projects, we've we've done all the major school projects, not that there won't be one down the road sometime, but so as far as the borrowing needs, you know, we have much smaller capital needs than than larger ones. But, you know, the other thing we have to consider, and again, we have that experience with those two project, with those two projects and others, is what impact on the capacity of the schools does the new growth have? Something we don't have an answer to now, or or, you know, won't until we know what the growth is looking like, but I mean, that's a consider consideration as well, so. But yeah, no, I think the the need for new growth is clear, and, you know, I don't know where we go if this isn't it, so.
But we need you to engage, but we need you all to engage more with the community because right now, you know, we're not hearing an awful lot from people, and we want the input. It doesn't have to be all in favor, you know, we wanna hear it, and we wanna hear what their concerns are. We wanna be able to address those, and so people, we wanna encourage them to come to town meeting. So we want, we want you to talk it up. We want you to have people reach out, you know, through the website, through the town administrator, through ourselves, and participate because the board has some very big decisions to make. They're gonna impact this particular project and the community for the foreseeable future. So we welcome it, we want it, and we wanna hear it.
Do you know the time, do you know the timetable is for the decision on opt-outs? Because I think I think that's a, I think that's a big part in the community's support of this project.
Yeah, within the, within the, November.
November seventh is the board meeting. I would expect we would be telling folks that we.
November seventh, that's the targeted date. I wouldn't be surprised if it slips, but, you know, based upon, because we're gonna have significant more input, you know, between now and then, and, you know, it's a big decision.
Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, apologies to your colleagues for slowing you down.
Don't talk about trash.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. For no jokes on crash.
Thank you.
Yeah, I said no jokes on crash.
As we're exiting.
That's right. Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay. Now to the regularly scheduled portion of our meeting. Actually, do you wanna take like a two-minute break quick?
That would be awesome.
Yeah, a little.
We're gonna take a two-minute break, and then we'll be right back. Okay, Dr. Daley, just from a timing perspective, for the honor for the professional teacher status, did you tell them six-thirty, seven, what did you?
I told them seven, so I think if we do the student report.
Do we have time for public and student? Okay, so then I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna first begin with public input and see if there's anybody that has any input as a member of the public. Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the student report. We have Piper Kerwin here, class of twenty-twenty-four, correct? Welcome, Piper, and turn it over to you.
So for notable academic matters, the end of the first quarter is coming up on November fourth, and the practice SATs were last Saturday on October fifteenth. And for notable fine arts matters, Masker's Haunted Playground is this weekend, Saturday, the twenty-second, at the Bachelor's School. And then the marching band recently hosted a competition through Nezba down at the Fields. And then the band themselves scored three stars, three stars in their last competition on October ninth. For notable athletic matters, the NRHS football team just had their last home game. They unfortunately lost, but it had a lot of spirit. And then the golf sectionals takes place tomorrow in Georgetown, and we do have Isabel Brozina, who is third in the state, is going to compete in that. And then a lot of fall sports are coming to an end, like golf, football, it's the start of the winter sports season. For other, the senior class is hosting a homecoming for all grades, and school picture retreats are for, are set for November first. So that's pretty much it. And then for the student work report, I have my AP World History map project, which is, I have it on my Chromebook here, but it's basically a a group map that groups in the class have worked on to kind of place, we're learning about the Silk Road right now. So we kind of placed where certain people have traveled along trade routes and like where they are in modern day. And so I don't know if you can see, but it's like a bunch of people have contributed to where they researched that maps are. Yeah.
Nice. Okay.
Thank you.
Comment.
Show it again.
Do you know how many of the teams are gonna be participating in tournaments afterwards? Do you know?
I do not know, as far as I know, yeah.
I know we've had some pretty successful seasons, but.
Yeah.
Nothing officially yet, but it's looking pretty good for us.
Yeah.
We do have some of our new, this is your first time presenting.
Yes.
We've got a new group, there's five total students that are gonna be presenting this year, and one is Andrew's returning, and then four are new faces.
Great.
Really, it's always great to have you.
Great to have you.
And I would just, since it is your first meeting, the one thing I would say is, well, a couple of things. Number one, you can leave when it's done if you want. And number two, also, if there's something on the agenda, if there's something that comes up that you wanna be heard on, you know, Dr. Daley can give you the agenda in advance, please feel free to tell him that you wanna speak on something. We can take things out of order. Like, we really do wanna hear student voice, and so if you, you know, you look and you have a question about what something is, ask Dr. Daley, you can reach out to me beforehand as well if you want. And, you know, I'm gonna assume I'm not, that you're not gonna stay the whole meeting usually.
Yeah, probably.
But if there's something that you wanna be heard on, please, you know, let Dr. Daley know, and we can move it out of order just to make sure we get your comments on it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'm assuming we're not gonna start with budget goals. We're gonna move on to recognize our professional status educator.
Excellent, thank you so much. I'm gonna share on the screen, we have several educators at home, as well as some in person, and some who are not unable to meet here tonight. I just will recognize everyone. This is something that we started, last year was the first year that we did this. You know, in order to earn professional teacher status in the district, you need to work for three full consecutive years and be rated proficient or higher in our evaluation system. We welcome new educators every year to our district, and they put in a tremendous amount of work and do a great job. But for for different reasons, it may not work out for everyone being the right fit in our district. And after three years, we award the professional status to those that are that are sticking with us. And our hope is that our folks that that earn professional status remain with North Reading for quite some time. As I went through the new hires this year, we didn't have as many as we've had in the past. And we've had quite a, quite a large number of teachers that we hired a few years ago remain with us. And so I think it's it's really great, and I'm really thrilled to be welcoming those folks here with us tonight. And the committee last year said, you know, when we invite our people, we have to have something nice to hand them as well as just the recognition. And so we did work, what we developed were these, it's a small token, but it's a nice North Reading Public Schools pin that is given to them, it's symbolic, but it's just a nice gesture, so I'll be passing those out. So I just wanna recognize the people that are here tonight from the different schools. I will recognize the folks that are here in person tonight. So Paul Avazian is a digital learning specialist for the district. He works at the Middle High School, he's here with his his family, his wife's here, George, his son George, and his son Arthur is here as well, so we're really glad to have you here tonight. So, thank you, Paul.
Nothing too loud.
And Mr. Daniel Muse, who's here from the, from the, he works at all of our schools, pretty much. He is not only an elementary music teacher, but he's also the marching band leader for, he's one of the, assists with that. He leads the winter percussion program, and he just gives so much to our students all the time. I'm really excited about how our band program has grown, and I've heard some good things. I I actually had a school committee member reach out to me and say he's hearing great things as well, so Mr. Buckland, so. We just wanna give you this pin.
I didn't get to see you today, so thank you so much, my daughter.
My daughter, too.
Yes, I I'll just, on that comment, I'll just say, a couple of members of the community who have kids in the bands reached out and said, we need to keep this teacher, he's very good. And so hopefully we, hopefully we keep you for many, many years.
And you're tolerating my ten-year-old's clarinet lessons while.
Trumpet on my side, so that's awesome.
There you go.
Might have to have a school committee band.
Oh, there we go.
We would do it. I'm in.
Let me, let me just clarify, children of school committee band.
Yeah, you don't want us in the band.
No, no, my wife would. There you go.
So I just wanna recognize some of our folks online and some of our folks who are in person as well. At the Bachelor's School, Ms. Karen Bast and Ms. Sarah Fitzpatrick, who've earned professional status, so thank you to them. It's funny, as I went through this list, some folks have moved schools, some moved schools, and then moved back before we even started the year, so it's very interesting. But the hood school is represented here tonight. Dr. McKay is here in person, which is great to support his his professional status teachers. Jessica Blanchett, who's a nurse at the school, who has done so much for us, can never thank our nurses enough. Ms. Sarah Leickwig, Ms. Ally Marcus, Ms. Brittany Joyce, and Ms. Ashley Zinchuk, I believe, are all of our hood school employees. At the little school, it's Jenny Dakin, Kristin Nickerson, Lauren Kelly, and Kelly Posati. At the middle school, Lauren Collins and Allison Stewart. At the high school, Alexandra Pepe and Josh Rocco. So we just, I don't know if anyone wanted to share any thoughts, but this was, again, it's a, it's a nice ceremony, it's just a nice chance to recognize them. I read their names to you as a part of the staff report, you've probably seen them maybe in different presentations, but, you know, there's so many staff members who work so hard behind the scenes to really make that commitment to North Reading, and it's really what makes our school system what it is. And I think that the the stability and the, you know, the longevity of our of our administrators and our teachers in our district goes a long way to why we're successful. So I think it's just a nice time to step back and celebrate this achievement and this this commitment to teaching in North Reading.
Thank you, Dr. Daley. I'll 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 jump in with a couple of quick comments. I think, you know, I I obviously know some people 'cause they had my children before, you know, and so like, that that's an easy one. But then, you know, it's nice to hear people that have only been here for three years that are making a difference even beyond, you know? I mean, if we hear about people calling out, you know, teachers that are getting involved in whatever and impacting the lives of the kids. We talk a lot in school committee meetings about trying to retain people in this district. We talk about, you know, Dr. Daley started as an assistant principal here, now he's a superintendent. You know, we have a lot of, you know, people that started assistant principals that moved into principal roles and, you know, teachers that are taking assistant principal roles. And that really starts from hiring good people and retaining them. And so, you know, we love to see that, we love to see, you know, while it's nice to have new teachers, it's great to retain the people that you hire. And so, I mean, I think any business in this world would wanna keep their their staff. And so it's just great that we're able to keep so many and see so many people, you know, getting professional status this year. So thank you all for staying, and, you know, look forward to many more years with you guys.
Absolutely, and I would just add that, you know, these three years have been quite the trial. So congratulations for surviving that, congratulations to all of us, but especially coming into a new situation, another another sign that you've been tempered and are ready to continue. So we're thrilled that that there's so many. Yep, absolutely great.
I mean, the passion and commitment it takes to be, to be in this profession is just wild. I mean, it's just great. So anybody who's really committed themselves to it and and wants to be here, but in this profession generally, especially knowing throughout most of the country there is a shortage, but you all want to be here, and you want to stay here, it's just, it's heartwarming, it's gratifying, so our thanks to you. I mean, we're up here because of you, so thank you.
And the only other thing I would say is, 'cause y'all heard me talk at the beginning of the year, too, but, you know, this school committee really does care about the teachers. You know, we always wanna have fair contracts with you guys, and we wanna support you, and, you know, that's what we're here for. You know, we are here to try to keep good people and keep you guys in district. And, you know, if there are improvements that you suggest, let us know. We were just, some of you came in at the end of the meeting where we're hearing about wastewater, and we're talking about new growth so that we can continue to expand and, you know, do what we need to do in these schools. And, you know, we do take it serious, we are trying to fund as best we can the schools and, you know, support all of you. So, you know, I know that you probably don't see the day-to-day from what we do all the time, but, you know, we're volunteers that are just trying to, you know, keep you guys and, you know, do what we can to fund this district. So, you know, thank you all for being here, and, you know, good luck.
Thank you to those who joined us online.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Okay. Feel free to leave whenever you want to. Okay, we're gonna go. Wanna go back to budget goals first, Dr. Daley, or Mike, what do you wanna do first? We got a, we got a lot of you tonight, what would you like to do first, sir?
Do the budget?
Do the budget goals quick?
Yeah, so this is just, I'm hoping, is that kinda cleaning up, not even addressed, going back to August, where the goals were originally presented along with the budget calendar. I think at the time, we were in the process of completing the school committee goals, and there was a lot of, certainly, you know, similarities between the the broader school committee goals for the year. school committee goals for the year. And certainly, when you look at the financial management goals, we tried to certainly make sure there was some synergy and some, between, between both our focus of our fiscal '24 budget, as well as the broader fiscal management goals of the committee. And I think that's what we're, there were some minor modifications to the languages here, but I sent, I think all six goals, purpose and vision remain, remain the same from what was presented in the August, September meetings. And I think we're really looking tonight to just kind of officially adopt these so we can move forward as the fiscal '24 budget process, believe it or not, internally with administration is going to be kicking off Thursday. So we're, we're kind of still on schedule. I think the biggest change was around, some conversations around number three, that we certainly want to continue to support the development of the plan to reduce the kindergarten fees, leading toward the eventual goal of providing free full-day kindergarten. And I think we added some language there around exploring next steps to increase access to universal free day preschool as well. Number four changed slightly. That's around continuing to review the current structure of user fees for extracurricular and athletic activities, as well as its impact on families, and looking at what, what that does and whether or not there eventually should be sort of a broader kind of cap and to make sure that, that the, certainly, we would never want to kind of impact participation in these programs. So having, having a focus in that area as well. But that, that language was, was altered. I think one, I skipped one and two, but I think those kind of remained, remain the same. Certainly around the broader vision of supporting fiscal year, you know, '24's budget to reflect our strategic plan known as NRPS 2025. Continuing, continuing to explore ways to reduce our energy costs and our operational costs, solar power, boiler upgrades, wastewater efficiencies. I think you'll hear some of that in our capital plan presentation this evening. Certainly aligning and evaluating our positions that have been supported outside the, the operating budget, particularly in recent years through the, the SR funding, and making sure that we have sort of a broader vision and plan and how that's going to align with our NRPS 2025 strategic budget vision. So I think that language was changed, but I think the focus remains the same. And then the final goal, I think, as, as always, is to continue to collaborate closely with town officials. We've heard from Michael Gilberto this evening and, and the finance planning team and the chairs and vice chairs. That collaborative effort has been important, and we want to continue that. And there's a, there's sort of a focus on working on, a commitment to work on the budget development calendar this year, to make sure that there's, whenever possible, some of the revenue guideline can be done a little bit earlier. And we're hoping that will be achieved, because that, that will help us, certainly in the hiring season, and capture some of those initiatives as well. So I think, I think that kind of captures the summary, and I don't know if there's any questions.
No, I mean, I would just, the only, one, one comment, one question, but not really specific. And that's the comment, I forgot to put in the, the school committee goals, too, so we'll put that on the next calendar. But I think we sort of tentatively came to agreement on the school committee goals, which I think these align with. And so I think we can adopt those. The only question, and this is probably for later on, but it is nowhere else on the agenda, so with universal free, free-day pre-K, like, just pre-K, even with, with the fee or whatever, do you know how many we turn away every year that we just don't even, because the first step of, of kindergarten was allowing everybody that wanted full-day kindergarten to get it? Do you know how many people we turn away for, for pre-K?
It is a good question. I might, I don't have the data.
Okay. Even if we could look later on, I'm just curious.
I don't think it's a large number, but I, it's, it's in the single digits, I believe.
Okay, that's all, okay.
I, I can confirm that, though.
That was just step one of, of kindergarten, was allowing everybody that wanted it to at least get it. And so if we were turning away lots of people, that, that would, to me, that's a natural first step, is even just, because then the question was, do we have enough space here to even house a second one if we needed to or whatever?
There still may need to be a lottery, but it would just be the, the cost of it would be different.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, I mean, it's driven a lot by the, there's a specific ratio that we have to maintain through all of the program we're offering. So that, that's a driving factor as well.
No, I, yeah. I, I was just curious, because if it was like lots of them, like we're talking about three extra classrooms if we had it, but if it's one, I think, I figure that out. Okay. Anybody have any changes to the budget goals? If not, I will undertake a motion to accept the budget goals for this year, 2024.
Second.
What?
Second.
Did you, who, who did the motion?
Oh.
I need a motion. Noel moves.
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
There you go. I need a second.
Second.
A second by Jeff. Okay, so we're all together, all those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you, Michael. Shall we move on to the capital improvement plan presentation?
Great. So we're going to pull the presentation up. We have, as was in your packet, there is a, a brief PowerPoint, as well as the five-year revised capital plan. And I'll do my best to walk through the PowerPoint as efficiently as possible. I did ask Sonny Campagni, the director of facilities, to be here to help address any specific questions that may come up after the presentation about some of the, certainly some of the facility-related requests. He was certainly a big part of putting the, the plan together. So what we hope to accomplish tonight is review the capital items and projects that were approved over the last fiscal year process, and provide a quick update onto where we stand with the timeline of completion of those projects. It is a five-year capital plan. That's, we work on annually, and we update annually. Tonight's presentation particularly, I think we'll have a focus on next year's requests. But we'll certainly look at the next three years and the next five years and the outlook. But I think we'll focus the detailed, the details on what we're specifically looking to request for next year. Certainly, we'll look at the future requests from the three-year, five-year cycle. Again, there's the capital improvement planning committee, which is the next phase, or where the requests this evening would, would go to. Looks at three years, but we like to put together also five years as well. So you'll notice that there are some, some modifications every year is typical.
One, real quick question. The special improvement ban that we were, that Representative Jones was able to get us special funding for, what, did that come off of '24, or was that a future year?
So that was a fiscal '23, current year request that did not get funded.
Okay.
So it would have been probably a priority in fiscal '24 because it got deferred. So now it's just coming off.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious when I was reading through this. Thank you.
And then hopefully, we'll leave the time for discussion and questions. We are hoping that the committee can come to some type of consensus this evening, because the CIPC did move up their timeline. They are looking for us to send requests in as soon as possible, believe it or not. So, all right. So just before I get to the future and the current plan, there were three projects that got approved in fiscal '23, one of which was the Phase Two of the little school HVAC kind of building management system upgrades, which we had partnered with Automated Logic. And essentially, what we did was we were able to expand the building management system across the entire school. So originally, before we started any phase of this project, it was just the boiler room. We then opened it up to the educational wings and the administration wing. With this Phase Two, it expanded through all, all of the wings of the building, including the gym and cafeteria and other, other wings of the building. So I'm happy to report this project is completed. Got the final invoice today, believe it or not, with the retainage amount. And it's been reviewed, and it's, it's fully completed. So that, that's great work, great work. Certainly, Mr. Campagni was instrumental in keeping that project going throughout the summer and into the fall. The elementary HVAC rooftop units, so we did get funding available to replace. This involved all three elementary schools, as a reminder. There was units at the batch, the hood, and the little. We've completed the project at the hood elementary school and the little elementary school. We are still, there was some delay in coils and in parts of the bachelor units, which are a little bit of the larger units, it's a different company. And we are hopeful that will happen in the very near future. It was supposed to happen at the end of September, but there continues to be a delay in specific parts that are kind of like the brains of the system that we're just waiting on. But hopefully that will happen in the very, very near future. The third project was the instructional technology equipment, $135,000. The previous project was, the previous two projects, too, I didn't put the value, just as a refresher, was $100,000 each. This item was $135,000, and it was to complete the instructional technology, the smart boards at all the elementary schools. So we had started this through a combination of funding. Some of it was grant-funded, some of it was donations, some of it was some operating funding that we had available. But the two allotments over the last two years that we got through capital, with this final allotment, I'm happy to report that all of the elementary schools at every classroom, instructional room, in some cases, conference room, now has a new smart board. So that's, that's great that we're able to do that. A little bit accelerated through some grant funding and some gift funding that we received over the last couple of years accelerated this project. We did it a couple of years earlier than we were hoping, which is, which is great news. This project got completed probably like mid-September. We didn't quite make the, the start of the school year, went in about a week or two after. So now I'm going to focus on the next year's plan. Just as a reminder, when we're talking about large capital, we're talking about items that have a, kind of an acquisition cost, either per from a unit cost basis or a project cost basis, that are greater than $25,000, and have a useful life of five years or more. Anything else that doesn't qualify and meet that criteria does not go to the CIPC. It's small capital. And we mainly look at these three areas: vehicles, our fleet of vehicles, our technology, our facilities. Most of our equipment replacements that we do have qualify as small cap, so it doesn't meet this criteria. So these are really the three areas that we're, we're addressing. Here's a three-year snapshot based on the revisions that we're proposing this evening, and we're certainly looking for feedback. But what we'll be presenting is, from a funding perspective, you know, a little over $400,000 for next year. And then we do have some large-ticket items potentially coming online that have been part of this plan, that have been deferred in some areas based on maintenance that we've been able to upkeep. But we do have a couple of high-ticket items that we'll get into that we would be looking to potentially address it within this three-year window. One in particular that's highlighted there is the hood school roof. But overall, certainly some large requests that we'll be looking for over the next three years. So I'm going to focus on fiscal '24. I'm going to start with technology. The, the one technology request that is a part of fiscal '24 involves a middle school, high school Wi-Fi upgrade. So the Wi-Fi network infrastructure at the middle school and the high school, even though it certainly, believe it or not, is actually, is 10 years old. And it is recommended, and we have had the, the system assessed, and we've had some, some companies walk through and assess the condition of, of the, the infrastructure. Every 10 years, you sort of look to, to kind of do an upgrade and to do some revisions, just to make sure you kind of stay ahead of the curve. You would never want to kind of fall behind and impact learning. It's so important, this day and age. So we do feel like we need to put some funding into this project to, so again, the high school network infrastructure was installed in 2013, so it is 10 years old. The middle school was a year later in 2014. So mainly what we're looking for is upgrades to our wireless access points, and in some cases, some of the switches, that will be reaching the end of the useful life as we certainly approach the next couple of fiscal years. We have received proposals from state contract vendors that have done an assessment and walkthrough of the, of the network infrastructure. We do believe there is E-Rate, or we do know that there's E-Rate Category Two funding available for this project. So you may recall, five years ago, 2017, when we did a very robust project at the elementary schools, that was a substantial cost of $400-plus-thousand. We did get E-Rate funding in combination of a digital learning partnership grant that was available at the time, and were able to reduce that cost to the town significantly to less than $100,000. So we do know there's up to potentially 40% of E-Rate funding, federal funding from the E-Rate program, available for this, for this type of a project. So we certainly would be applying if this were approved, and, you know, hopefully crossing the Ts and D's and the Is and following that process to receive up to, we, we think we'd be eligible for 40%, which could reduce the actual cost of some of the proposals we received from vendors that would most likely bid and do this work of $130,000. We could reduce that down to about an $80,000 cost to, to the town. Yes, Mr. Buckley?
Mr. Connolly, so just understand, so the Wi-Fi is divided into two different years, but it's '24 and '28. And is it, '24 is the high school, and '28 is the middle school? And if so, why?
No, sorry.
It's not?
So the fiscal, the '24, this is middle school, high school.
Okay. So it's, so it's two different requests, but both of them are middle school, high school, just two different pieces of?
No, so I'm, so middle school and high school, they're both about 10 years old. You know, middle school might, might be a year.
That, that was my question, because they're, they're a year apart, but then, when I was looking through the request, they were like five years apart when we were going to.
So fiscal '24, the request would address the middle school and the high school.
Okay.
The fiscal '28, the five years later in the plan, is then going back to the elementary school, schools, which would then, at that time, be 10 years old.
Okay.
And looking to do a similar type refresh of the access points.
Okay.
Which we believe will start breaking down when it gets greater than 10 years.
When I was reading, okay. When I was reading the description, I got, I read that wrong.
Yeah. So hopefully, so that's what we're looking at.
And, and it's mostly the access points within the school. It's not the pipe coming in.
Correct. The, the wiring, the pipe, even most of the switches that are in good condition. It's more the access points that are going to essentially stop being supported. We want to refresh those before we get to a point where the signal is, is breaking down. Yeah. So that's what we're looking at here in this project. Okay. So that's, that's our only request for technology in fiscal '24.
One, one other quick question on that.
Yeah.
I assume, as a part of that, part of it is infrastructure, hardware. I assume, as a part of that, you're talking security, too. You'll upgrade the security element of it, that would be naturally.
Yes, correct. Yep.
All right, yeah.
Yep, absolutely. All right. So the fiscal, fiscal '25, we would sort of get back to the vision of having that computer replacement plan, the device, device one-to-one plan. We've, we're able to leverage so much of the COVID funding, the grant funding that we've had, that we haven't, we've replaced enough devices with that funding that we haven't had to have this request for two fiscal years in a row. But we do envision looking to the future that we'd have to get back to this annual allotment of $60,000, which just helps us keep that, keep that refresh cycle going to deploy our one-to-one device program district-wide, K through 12. And then the second item for fiscal '25 would be to start to address, similarly to what we did at the elementary level over the last two years, the high school now, believe it or not, the smart boards are now getting, by fiscal '25, 11, 12 years old. And we'd want to, again, get ahead of it and start to do something similar to what we did at the elementary schools and refresh that, that classroom interactive display board to, to, again, stay ahead of them breaking down before we, we address it. And this plan calls for sort of a phasing approach to do that as well. There's about 100 total rooms, and we would look to do a similar solution. We don't think it would be as costly as the elementary school, based on the needs. But we think it would be about 3,000 per classroom, and that would be a kind of a one, a one solution, you know, fits all, for what we would look to do from a, from an interactive display board in, in the room. So the estimate, total estimate is about $300,000. Yes?
Mr. Connolly, the one, one comment I was going to have on technology is, it seems a little bit light this year, the request. And especially with, my big concern is this wastewater is going to happen. Any of these big projects in the future are going to be concerning.
Yeah.
I don't know how we're going to be able to fund some of these. But on technology and specifically, if we have a year where we're not requesting the $60,000 for the devices, are we missing an opportunity to try to either move all of these up one year or spread it over three years to try to?
Yeah, we thought about that. We did. You know, we think we can get by another year with the, with the, what we have, but, you know.
But next, but next year, when you, when we look at it, next year, you know, there's no vehicle this year.
Yep.
Vehicle, there is something for next year. Facilities triples next year.
Yeah.
And then, and then technology goes up next year.
Should we be looking to get by, or should we front-load it now?
Yeah.
Should we try to get some of it upfront?
We looked, we have had a few different iterations of this plan, and one, one was similar to that. Do you go, I know, 100, 100? Yeah, it's not that, I mean, we looked, we have had a few different iterations of this plan and one, one was similar to that. Do you go, I know, a hundred, a hundred, a hundred?
Yeah.
Um, and, and look to try to get this project starting, starting earlier. I, that's feedback we're looking for.
Okay, and we, we can talk about that at the end, but I was just wondering, because just on this area, like if, you know, when we, when you get the sixty thousand funded by the one-time funds. Seems like an opportunity to possibly move up something else.
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, or spread it over three years, so.
Yep, absolutely.
We can talk about it.
That's good feedback.
Thank you.
Um, so then like the broader picture of technology before we move on to vehicles would be. Five-year outlook, wireless infrastructure next year, middle school, high school, we want to get ahead of it. It's so important. Continuation of the ongoing devices would pick up in fiscal twenty-five. Um, instructional equipment, smart boards, again, we can certainly address this, certainly open to doing that. Um, and on a sooner, um, longer cycle. Um, and then there could be a need to supplement some staff device replacement because we did do a lot of that during the COVID all at once. So we're just concerned that the operating budget, even though there's some funding in to do that, wouldn't be able to handle it. Um, if a lot of devices are coming off, uh, reaching the end of their life at one time. So we do have some funding in the outer years to address that area. And then this fiscal twenty-eight, to clarify, that's, that's elementary. As it says there.
And, and last question in technology, but um, it says that the, the sixty thousand dollars, the real number is one fifty. And it's ninety in the operating budget and sixty in the capital, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And have we put that ninety into the operating budget already or would that be a new?
The ninety is in the operating budget.
Okay.
And then, I mean, one, we haven't got to the operating budget clearly, but we, I mean, one option is we try to put all of that in the operating budget before we get to fiscal twenty-five. And then there's, may not be a need for a capital request, but that, that's always, we've tried to do that. It's just hard because your operating budget is so tight.
I was just curious, so, so the ninety is already in there and?
It is. That was added, we were able to add that a couple of years ago.
Thank you.
Yep. So looking at vehicle requests, so this gets to Mr. Buckley's question at the beginning, but I, I had this in there, not because it's a request. But I just wanted to make sure the full committee is aware of kind of what's occurred. Um, and that we did have a earmark state grant through Representative Brad Jones, who's done a phenomenal job advocating on behalf of the district. And he secured funding. Um, at the time, we thought that was forty-five thousand dollars, um, which was back in January. Recent quotes because of a variety of areas and loss of rebates and so, and inflation and everything that's been going on with the supply shortages. Um, the most recent state contract quote, quote, believe it or not, was close to sixty-three thousand dollars. So we actually have already gotten support from the finance planning team to, to fund that through a sort of a free cash, a free cash transfer. To, to support purchasing this vehicle. So we would do that this year, so there's no need to request this through the capital. I just wanted to make that clear. Everyone's aware that that's how that, that happened. Yeah. Um, future vehicle requests, so I think looking into the future. Um, looking at the two thousand fourteen Ford F-four fifty utility rack tech, we don't have that for next year, but we. Even though I mean, it's, it's taken some wear and tear. We put some, we have put some costly repairs into it recently. It has a lot of idling engine time. There's rust on the engine that we've addressed, but we, it's an extremely important vehicle in terms of plowing and everything that it does. So we think that would be the next vehicle and that would be the priority. Now we'll assess that as we go through the year and maybe, you know, can we defer that another year? I don't know, but for right now, we have it on fiscal twenty-five. There's another piece of equipment that's over twenty years old. That's important that, um, certainly Mr. Companion and his team has been looking at it. It is old, it is breaking down. It does have a long useful life of twenty-plus years, but we think we might need to address that area in fiscal twenty-six. Based on that, the condition, we definitely get a couple more years out of it. Um, and then we get back to our cycle of special education fleet. And um, supporting the cost of the two thousand fifteen, which would then be the oldest vehicle at twelve years old. Once we've replaced the, the vehicle we're replacing with the earmark funding. Um, and then we still have the two thousand nine Ford F-three fifty pickup. Um, as the third vehicle of that fleet, which is not used a lot, but it is used and it is important during the winter for plowing. Um, and we feel like we can, because it's not used a lot, we feel like we can actually get a few more years out of it, but we, we, we don't know if it's going to last beyond fiscal twenty-eight. And that's why we're seeing it there. Um, so that's the vehicles. So now we go to our facilities and there's a few projects for next year. The first of which is the hood school boiler project. Now these have been part of the plan. Um, and we feel like by looking to replace those next year, we've, we've upgraded the, updated the quote and had. Companies come in and kind of re-quote the, the cost to replace the two hood, hood school boilers, which were installed about nineteen ninety-nine, so they're about twenty-three years old. Uh, we would certainly want to move to the higher efficiency condensing, condensing boilers, which we did with the little school back in two thousand twelve. We saw a great benefit in the energy efficiency of that upgrade and moving to the, the high, high condensing efficiency boilers. Um, so we would look to do a similar project at the hood school. Um, the current boilers, I just, they're getting by, they're in fair condition. I don't think, I don't think right now we're in danger of them failing, but we have had to put a lot more. Um, repairs and costly maintenance projects into them because of their age and their condition. Um, so we, we feel like looking at energy efficiency and how we can improve that. Um, and, and save some operating dollars, this could, could be a project that we could be, could address next year.
Mr. Connolly, what's, what's the magnitude of the repairs?
So I mean, trying to have Sonny here, he's, he's been more involved in it.
We're lucky we did because we had a pipe burst. So it just seems more and more flameouts. Uh, we've had a couple of companies in looking at it. Uh, I've had some numbers of just, um, working on the, the boards themselves. One board was seven thousand plus the labor. Uh, you know, they're, they're old burdens. Um, I mean, they're not that old, I'll, I'll give you that, but it just seems like they're breaking down more and more.
And, and Mr. Connolly, on the pricing, again, in your notes, you talk about ten to fifteen thousand in savings per year.
Mm-hmm.
You talk about possibly getting a rebate of thirty thousand and then applying for something else. I assume the two twenty-five that you put in there doesn't, it doesn't account for any of, any rebates or anything, correct?
Correct, correct.
So that would just be a reduction of the cost?
And the savings, we base that model on the little school and what we saw.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we were to wait a couple of years on this, just full transparency, it could be something that could qualify for like an accelerated repair, MSBA project. They, they've advised their um, criteria for a lot of these projects. So they're, they're windows, doors, boilers, roofs. Um, at one point, twenty years, what was a boiler would qualify. Now it's twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
Um, yeah, we, we just feel like if we're going to, that's a pretty involved process. And where, you'll hear in a moment, we feel like let's, if we're going to get involved, we should focus that on the hood school roof. And a project that, you know, this is pretty fair cost that we could do. And we feel like we should kind of do this kind of outside of that process and look for the rebates.
I mean, it, I understand there's probably not a specific limit, but I mean, theoretically, could you put both in?
You could theoretically, you could do that. Yeah, you could.
But you have to weigh that against the repairs that we're making now and the effort.
Yeah. Yep. Um, the next project is a project that was put in last year. I think that was some of the feedback we got. It's been part of our capital plan. I think it was originally going to be a fiscal twenty-four project. We kind of accelerated that and requested it in fiscal twenty-three. If you speak to those building school principals, this is certainly becoming more of a priority for them. Um, and this is to replace the clock system with a updated wireless clock system. I think it's just the clock systems they have now are just becoming more difficult to troubleshoot. Many of which, and Sonny can, can speak to it, have been replaced with kind of battery, battery-operated clocks. They're constantly not on the same time, time and it's, I think it's just a management issue at the school. It's becoming more difficult to manage the bell schedules and so forth. And we've had these quotes and we've, I've recently updated the quotes with this vendor, state contract vendor that's been involved. We do feel like it's time to address um, some of these electronic systems that are just breaking down and getting old at the elementary schools. This would be the first step to doing that. That's why we kind of have it as like a phase-in approach. It would be, let's address the clock system. Down the road, I think there's certainly the um, access control system, potentially the intrusion alarm system. Technology is advancing and up, updating every year, so we're continuing to kind of look at that. Um, but this wireless clock system and moving away from kind of the wired analog system, I think would be an important first step. That would certainly improve the efficiency and just the, the management operation of the school.
Yeah, not only that, the clock system also works the doors, the timing. Uh, it used to be when I, when I came in here three years ago, it was probably, I'd go in maybe once every two or three months. It's now once a week. You know, it's just, it's after a week, it's, I think it's off eighty-six seconds. So I go in there and do a reboot. It's, you know, I only know because uh, Maureen calls me from the, from the, um, the middle school. It's going out, the doors are open at two eleven instead of two ten. So now I just put it on my schedule every week to upgrade it.
Great.
So certainly a priority.
High school, do they just do official Apple time and everybody uses their phone to figure out what time it is?
Yeah. Um, the next project for fiscal twenty-four, before we get into kind of future years. Would be certainly the elemental window replacements. And again, Sonny's done a lot of work with getting some vendors out to assess the, the condition. But certainly the principals have had this request um, on their radar for a number of years now. But in particularly at the hood and the little elementary schools, the two older schools. There's many of the windows are in poor condition and we feel like we've, it's gotten to the point where we need to address it. Um, they're over twenty-five years old in most classroom locations and at times they're difficult to open and close. We did put some funding into some of the rooms that had just absolutely needed it during the COVID time when we wanted to improve ventilation and have the ability to open and close windows. The bachelor, most of that money actually focused on some of the bachelor rooms um, at the, that school. But we've, we've looked at it, um, certainly various windows and screens at each school are in need of replacement. It's kind of a wide variety of, of, of um, cost range based on the need at each location in, in the room and kind of what's happening. And does the window open in or open out and, and does it, and can it be, a screen be, be replaced? Um, so we've done some assessment. We feel like a phased-in approach of like sort of an every other year allotment. Would allow us to address this need throughout this five-year plan. So we would start with about a fifty thousand dollar request, which is trying to be economical. That would allow us to address about ten classrooms at each of these schools that we think are in the worst condition right now.
Yeah.
Um, and that would get this process started. Certainly would help improve energy conservation efforts um, at these locations as well. Is that, is that fair, Sonny?
Yeah, we've had some upgrades on both schools. Uh, a lot of the windows, it's a screen issue. Uh, if you look at the pitch, you can see the screen, the windows open in. So that's one of the biggest complaints because they open the windows and the bees get in. So some of that we can address with screens. Uh, uh, the other half is mostly just old, old windows that were never upgraded. They did an upgrade in both schools, they just, they did half. I don't know, and I guess they never just went back to it. That was it.
And, and my, my pushback on this one is again, you're spreading it out over five years. It's fifty thousand dollars a year to call contractors in rather than just either doing it over two years, the next two years, or.
Yeah.
Even one year and just try to do it all at once and you probably would get better pricing if you bought everything.
Sure.
Together and, you know, so again, that's the other thing that I would want to call out is, you know, I mean, I feel like. Windows and screens are sort of an essential part and it's ventilation, it's safety, it's a lot of other stuff.
Yep, I think, um, you know, I think we're looking at, you know, what's been appropriated on an, on an average basis for the schools over the last number of years. And we're, we're trying to certainly work within the, the financial constraints. I know, and we do have some high-ticket items like the roof and potentially the modules, which we'll hear about in a moment, coming, coming down the pipeline. You know, if we pursue the school, the MSBA's process, if there's approval to kind of move forward on that or, or, or look at that, we have to start that. Um, probably this next open window, because it does take two years to go through that cycle. Uh, before it would hit the books, it would be fiscal twenty-five, believe it or not, for the hood school roof. Um, and that was, if I, my hope would be that the C I P C would handle that similarly to the little elementary school. And that was kind of like taken outside of the C I P C process and sort of borrow, you know, this, which I think, I thought worked well. Um, but yeah, certainly, you know, it's good feedback. I think we can look at that.
Well, don't worry, I mean, we can get all we want because I've been hearing how great Mr. Friedman is on C I P C already. So we're, we're expecting big things this year, so.
So I'm happy to make revisions. Um, future outlook, and then we're getting close to the questions is, so hood school boilers, you know, a lot of this was a little bit of a puzzle. We're just, you know, these are needs everywhere. And Sonny and I went back and forth, I can't tell you the number of times we went back and forth on these. We're just really trying to find the, you know, the, the prior, what's the priority, what's the amount, what's the order of operation here? But they're all needs, you know, if money wasn't an object, we could be looking at to do these all in the next year or two. But we're, we're, we're trying to be economical and, and look at what's the highest priority. What fits, what's going to be, if we're going to pursue MSBA, what's that timeline, what do you got to do with some of these projects? Um, and this is what we've kind of come up with, but we're, we're very open to feedback um, from, from each of you. So hood school boilers, window replacements would be the key ones. They don't have the clocks on there, but that's kind of right now considered facility. Um, at one point I did have the solar parking canopy project in for fiscal twenty-four as well. Uh, I met, we met with RMLD back in the early beginning of the fall. We said we really want to do something educational, ground array. Um, we want to get this started, even though we didn't do the, the roof system, um, got, kind of got voted down. They took some pictures and did some measurements and we thought we were going to come back with a proposal to see what option A was going to be. If we were to kind of own the system and kind of purchase it outright and then. We would be benefiting directly from kind of behind the meter type system, so that energy is directly coming off our bill. Or option two, even though it wouldn't be a lot of revenue, if we just kind of did more of a PPA agreement and operating lease in front of the meter system, is it two thousand a month? It's small, but um, what does that look like? So I was, they came back a few weeks later and said they spoke to a handful of their, their suppliers, their, their solar companies. And a project of this size and scope right now is just not super attractive. Um, because of the supply chain issues, because of the cost of steel that's just gone so high. So they recommended kind of waiting on this another year, unfortunately. I know we really want, I know we keep trying to do this. Um, but we were trying to combine two needs with one proposal. Is it, we have a desire to put some charging station units at, you know, at the school locations. Um, and RMLD was willing to work with us to do that and it wouldn't really be like a cost, but they were willing to kind of come up with their program. So that, that was one recommendation, that if we did a parking canopy, which they liked better over the ground area that we had. That they could combine that and you'd be like, it'd also be car charging stations associated with it. So we, we sort of liked that. Um, but now they're, they're back to maybe, because this might be delayed a little, they, they were going to also look into whether if we, if we just did a car charging station unit at the high school, what, what, what would that involve? So I'm waiting to hear back from them on that, but it, we did, it did get delayed a little.
I'll just add that we're hearing from more and more teachers and staff that are looking for char, car charging stations.
Yeah.
I think that's only going to grow, so.
I think it's a great idea if we can get those in, and if there's dealerships willing to work with us to do it. Yeah, it'd be great. And, and I mean, I, I was also wondering about like, I, you talked about charging, uh. Doing some of the lights for, for the tennis court too. And if there's going to be additional lights as another lighting project in the future, I wonder if that could even be some sort of solar power.
Sure.
You know, to, for the phase three of the athletic lights.
Yeah, interesting. Um, so then certainly the hood school roof. So we, we're seeing leaks and just the need is, you know, five or six years ago, we did an assessment. There was some. We had the infrared scan, you know, it was kind of, we were kind of told it's in okay shape, but I think the last six years, it's, a lot's worn down. Um, just last week, when the rain that we had, a heavy rain, there was a lot of leaks that we were dealing with and we were over there addressing it. Fortunately, it didn't impact the operation of the school, but it, it came close to.
Yeah, it did.
Um, yeah, you could probably speak to it more than I. I know I did speak to the head custodian.
Yeah, numerous leaks. Uh, this has been going on for at least pretty hard, two, two years now. Uh, it's not even a holes in the roof, it's uh, stress fractures. So we've had a couple of roof companies in, uh, they can no longer repair it. Because the repair, instead of a hole here, it's everywhere. You'd have to put a patch on, you know, it'd be huge. Uh, so you know, they're pretty much telling me it's, it's time. It's an old membrane roof. Um, it's, it's pretty much past its life.
So this, this proposal as presented, it would be, um, assuming that we would look for that in fiscal twenty-five, that we would need to, if, we would pursue MSBA if there's a. So this this proposal as presented, it would be, assuming that we would look for that in fiscal twenty-five, that we would need to, if we would pursue MSBA, if there's a desire to do that. The their system has changed from the little school in two thousand seventeen that to now submit your statement of interest, you need select board and school committee approval. Not nothing to do with funding, just to submit the statement of interest and be considered. So we would need to do that. I think that they're going to open up their window in the January, February timeframe. And looking at their new timeline, it's really a fiscal twenty-five project because by the time you go through their cycle and get approval, it's it's the fall of fiscal twenty twenty-four. And you wouldn't start construction until fiscal twenty-five, so it's it's a fiscal twenty-five project. And we went through it with the little school, we know there's overhead costs that get get added. It is professionally managed, you get a project manager, you get a, they they review the design, they kind of take control, you play by their rules. They they appoint a approved designer, contractor and project manager that works with you. But you could get up to forty-eight to fifty-two percent reimbursement as well, so.
What, couple of quick questions or first comment is, if we needed the select board approval, you should have told me before I annoyed them with their project. The, so it's if it's forty-eight to fifty-two percent reimbursement, what do we get on the little school for reimbursement?
I think we were forty-eight percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, and that that went outside of the project, but was it was it on the CIPC originally or?
It was, and that's how they chose to handle it.
Because we almost, we almost need to submit it on this year's then, if even if it's going to be funded next year, if we're going to need the approval and but we can't wait for the approval because either way, it's going to be fifty percent of the cost for us.
So this would get submitted, because I'm submitting three years' worth of projects to the CIPC, but I think the funding wouldn't kick in the fiscal twenty-five. So it's a fiscal twenty-five funding project, but.
We'll just have to make sure that we call that out.
We call, we definitely need to call that out.
We do.
We would present in like the December timeframe. So we would look for, I think if they endorse it, if we endorse it here and they endorse it, that type of approach, then I think we would want to go in January and get approval obviously here again officially and then maybe the select board.
I endorse it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like we have a choice.
Yeah, yeah.
Just that there's no choice.
Yeah, exactly. It it's actually concerning that it's going to be twenty-five fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the other option is we don't, we don't pursue the MSBA and we just try to do it kind of a design bid on our own, but
Yeah, no, I think.
There's history around it, pursuing it.
The little.
The little.
Yep.
The next, so the next, the hood school and little school modulars, so we've we've maintained these well. They're they're essentially twenty years old at this point. They're all around two thousand three, two thousand two, two thousand three timeframe. They're not going to last certainly forever. We do feel now that the hood school at one point in the program, we felt like we could just remove the the modulars and do without it. Enrollment and even this potentially the presentation this evening, but the enrollment projections have and the trajectory of the enrollment has changed somewhat since the five years ago when that was kind of part of the plan. We now feel like we we, although we may not need replacement of the full structure, which is four classrooms, we think at least we would need a replacement of at least two classrooms. The little school is about a larger sized unit, but it's one classroom. From a square footage perspective, it's like one and a half of 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 a classroom. So we we do feel, and we've played, we we had companies and we did a lot of conference calls and looked at designs and and we've tried to revamp these numbers. Unfortunately, they're much higher than two years, the last time I did this was like three years ago, two thousand nineteen was the was the proposals I had. And I with the with the inflation, it's gone up, which is not surprising.
Michael, real quick, so
Yeah.
I'm I'm not a smart man, as everyone knows, but I've been on the school committee for six years. And this has been on the five-year
I know, I know.
Since I started on the school committee.
It's just such a
And it's still not coming up this year.
I know. Well, we we think
How does that work?
If we if we thought we were in danger of these not passing inspection and shutting down,
Okay.
we would be like, we need to do, we feel like we we have three more years with well, with the main, we've gotten them assessed and we're
Yeah.
we're putting money into them. I think the biggest thing is probably the exterior.
Exteriors are running away.
Yeah.
More in the little than the hood. The hood, the hood roof is, it's not just the membrane, it's the actual roof itself. I mean, when you go up there, you need to really step on certain areas.
Yeah.
So.
And this is the modulars too?
Yeah.
And and with with the modulars, I mean, again, for six years, I've also been advocating for replacement, so I'm happy that that's in there. But the just, I mean, I I know the answer to this, but just, do you have any idea what the number would be if like, if we didn't replace with a module, we actually did an extension to the building? How much more expensive is that than?
I don't think it's going to be more expensive. I think it's going to be less. I've done the numbers and it seems like the modular, you have a build-out phase and it's, we were talking anywhere from two to two fifty just for the building. And they come in and they, if you need a footings, you need any type of blockage, there's a whole nother cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. So, you know, you could be almost four hundred dollars. I mean, you could probably build a square, I mean, especially if you go with the hood, you only get in two rooms, you build a square building and you cut it in half and you're probably going to be cheaper. So that's why I would advocate honestly
Yeah.
going permanent instead of temporary.
Yeah, and then because then you don't have the same issue where in twenty years you have to replace it again and
True.
Yeah, I was thinking.
I mean, that that would be something.
We can dig that in further, but I think we want to, we also looked at leasing too.
Yeah.
And just because the cost of the acquisition cost is just so much. We've got some numbers on that.
I think I think an extension, you know, an expansion, a construction project makes more sense.
Yeah.
I agree.
We just said we're done with construction projects. Should have kept my mouth shut.
That's what you said.
Yeah, we know, yeah, I think that makes sense too, based on certainly on the numbers we got.
Oh, yeah.
And we were a little, we were a little sick of shocks when we got
I guess the question you have to ask yourselves, why would you, why would we want to set ourselves, if we if we have the capacity, why would we want to set ourselves up to do it again?
You wouldn't.
I know.
On the road.
I know.
So one more related question on that, though. So if we were to do a construction project, would it have to be two schools? Or could it be one school and you move programs enough so that you do one larger project at one school rather than replacing the modular at two different schools?
Talked about
in two different projects? You're talking about adding six rooms. Wouldn't it be easier to just add six rooms onto one school and decide where the programs go?
We've talked about that as well.
It wouldn't even be six, it'd be three rooms.
Okay.
Secondly, because the hood you're going to cut in half from four to two.
Yeah.
So it'd be like, it'd be almost like three and a half.
Or or leave the or leave the hood, we've talked about you leaving the hood at four and moving all the pre-K to a certain location.
To the hood.
All of the programming.
Yeah.
Which would be a programmatic shift, but that's what's happened now too, is some of our programs have moved from the little to the hood. And so we would just maybe just keep that
Yeah.
and just sort of build on. Kind of all is part of this plan that we've talked about with the K expansion, the K expansion, all of that.
You're talking about one point one five million to replace modulars that are going to have to be replaced in twenty years again. Whereas if you put, took one point two million dollars, you could probably do one construction project at one school and have a permanent solution
Yeah.
for some of these problems. And and I think you even think about like, if we go to universal pre-K, you know, you're going to need space for that as well. You do it all as one big project and it's one building project to add on to one of the schools. I don't know which school it is, but
Be the hood.
Hood, yeah.
Because we just, we just did the rooftop units on the mods. So you could take those three units and drop on a newer building and reuse them.
So we've talked, we've talked about that.
Well, that would be my my thought process, honestly.
Yeah, it's it's a little bit short. It's like if we had one more, so we have to think it through a little bit.
Yeah.
Because you're now breaking up some of what's at the little bit.
And at what point do you go try to get a hard, a harder number two?
Yep.
Yeah.
So there's certainly something we've been discussing.
Yep. That's, yeah, we've all talked about that.
And you're talking about three years out to begin, so there's time to
There's time to flush that out. I think putting it on the radar and submitting it, but then saying this is another solution that we need to be considering.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the hardest part of it is just, you know, the timing of it, like if you replace, if you take the modulars out, you'd probably have to take out the hood modulars, put the extension on and keep the little school modulars for one more year.
Yeah.
And for space reasons, and then when it's built, then you can
Yeah, you might lock out also in two years, you might get a downturn in the economy. Materials can't, you know, they can only, they can't go higher, they have to come down at some point. You know what I'm saying? I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Totally, you might get lucky.
Yeah, you hate, you hate to root for a recession.
Yeah.
Yep, all good, all good comments, absolutely. The last two items here just would be, and we've kind of played around with the year in this one area as well, but the, we want to certainly, we want to do what we did at the little school with their building management system at the hood school. So the hood school right now, with the work that we just did at the little, is the the only school that does not have their building management system fully occupied throughout the entire building, all the all the the areas. So we'd want to do a similar project.
And what does what does that do, building management?
So it allows us to essentially set and regulate and modulate the the occupancy schedules in every area of the building as opposed to, right now it's boiler remolding. So it's the energy, yeah, so it's
Nothing about safety, it's just climate stuff.
Yeah, but we can do a lot, it just, it improves the balancing, the zoning, everything should be more efficient and and better results.
Use the building, that should be part of the project.
Yeah, absolutely. So the athletic field lighting, this was, I will, this was a little bit earlier, a year ago. We, just because of all these other areas that have been kind of accelerated in their need, we did kind of push this out a little bit, but we're open to looking at this project as well. When I say phase three, so just a reminder, phase one was adding the two, the two lights to provide some lighting onto the multipurpose grass field at the middle school and the high school. Phase two is when we added the two poles, which essentially allowed us to light that whole field. Phase one lit like half the field. Phase, um, phase two lit that entire multipurpose grass field behind the stadium, which has significantly helped expand the use of the field and practice time for both school and town. This phase three and the amount that's in the plan, just so everyone's aware, would be adding four poles to like the outfield of Cary Park. And it would allow us to essentially that that soccer field that's used for soccer in the fall. It's used for, the town uses it for flag football, it's it has a lot of use for a variety of purposes. But that would essentially expand the use of that field and add lighting to that area. It's not the full Cary Park baseball field, so that would be like phase four. Or or the softball field even, that's like phase four, phase five. So the amount that's proposed and the the estimate is for four poles for essentially turning that outfield area into like a a lighted playing field for soccer, pop Warner football, could be lacrosse, I know it's flag football, other community events.
I'll just jump in, we, I've had a few questions on this. And so again, that field is utilized a lot this season in that outfield, but it's, as Michael said, it's not the full lighting. You can't play a night baseball game just with phase three. And once you get into baseball having lights, you then have to think about softball and Title IX having it as well. So that phase four has that other aspect as well that we have to consider.
A lot of the SSBC project closed, right?
So I think, I think overall, it's a great, you know, a great idea for the for the campus to have the night. I think we're getting great use of the lights that are there, the two that were already there that lit the back field. I mean, that, the number of night games we're able to play and the the amount of use those fields are getting has been, has been excellent since that project started, so.
Great. So certainly a lot to think about, a lot to to try to accomplish over the next five years. Going back to fiscal twenty-four, so we do try to put these projects in order when they go to CIPC, it's always a challenge. Very much open to discussion here. But one, but one idea is to, again, address the clocks. Hood school boilers, middle school, high school wifi, and then the elementary school window replacement.
So why did you, why did you, can you just speak quickly to why you rank them in this priority?
Yeah, and I don't, this might be mine too, I don't think I had a chance to present this, we're all open to feedback on this. But I I think we always try to look at sort of operational, you know, safety, security, educational impact. I think I've just heard so much about this issue in recent years and it's getting, it's it's growing. And for this allotment, I I would just love to kind of get this project completed and done. So it was on there last year, so it's already kind of on the CIPC's, I guess, mind. It got deferred, it was the one item that we didn't get.
What was the feedback last year on it?
I think they understood it. I just felt like when they prioritize our other projects, so this was like our lowest ranked project last year. We had the three, the HVAC, the 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 technology, then the van, and this was like number five. So I think that was part of it, I, so that's why I kind of reversed it.
Yeah.
Hood school boilers, I just, again, would love to get that accomplished, especially with other big facility items coming down with potential, you know, age, the roof project, potential modular, you know, building, and I would love to get this addressed. But you can certainly look at that. And the middle school, high school wifi, certainly very important, we want to address it. You know, everything's working currently, but I I don't think we want this to go too much longer. And then the windows, you know, open open to consideration to increasing that request, but I just ranked that number four.
Thoughts from anybody on the priority or other things? I mean, I think the two things that I brought up in there are maybe adding some technology for, rather than hundred and fifty thousand in the next, the following two years, maybe doing it either moving it up a year, all of them, or doing three of a hundred. And I I think the windows shouldn't be fifty thousand over five year, you know, spread over five years. I think that should also be something that we move up a little bit, but
I wonder if the clock upgrade, we should take it onto the budget and do it over two years or something like that.
Yeah, I thought about that.
I mean, if I'm, if you're talking about all three schools, so you're talking
I I thought about that.
Well, you know, whatever it is, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand.
We could look at like the budget, areas, facility rental, if we have some money, you know,
Not that we can address that, you know.
Yeah.
Snap our fingers and come up with it, but
It could be an area we try to look to do it that way.
Even the windows too theoretically could be if you come over enough years, but
But then, but then you can do, but then you can do a more impactful window project on the CIPC list.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a bad idea for clocks. I, it's something I've wrestled with.
I think the boilers needed to be done.
I agree.
We just have to figure it all out, so.
Well, I, yeah, I asked me to submit requests, so I apologize for that because last year it wasn't a member. But I'm I'm willing, I think, you know, yeah.
Well, if we have, I don't, I don't know how, and Diana, you've been on there the last few years and Jeff, you're just starting, but if we submit the list as is or whatever, we tweak it, but and then and then and then we come back
We can make changes.
in two months saying, hey, we've decided to take this one on ourselves.
That's fine, it happens all the time.
Just a minute.
Yeah, I think it's more like when we present, which is probably like mid-December.
That's when we should have
That's when we should kind of flush some of this out more. I think that would be acceptable.
We're going digital clocks, right? I mean, again, some of the windows you weren't talking about for five years, right? Are they, are they windows that need to be replaced now or not? Do we know something?
I mean, some of them are pretty bad, but you know, they've gone so far for so long, you know, you can still get away with it. I mean, yeah, some of them are, they're bad, I won't lie to them.
We felt like, again, looking at the economical, we felt like these, this would allow us to do the ones that are really bad.
Yeah, that's why we split it up.
And then we would
The difference between the really bad and the bad, is that is that that big of a difference? Like the bad's that much better than the really bad?
Well, they're either bad or they're not bad. You know what I'm saying, there's no really bad, I mean, they're really just bad, I mean, you know.
I'm just wondering like, it's, should it be one project, like, you know, or should it be two years or?
The reason we split it is just to break them out, oh, because I think if you take it on all at once, I think it's going to be more money than what we think. Quite honestly. So, you know, if we take care of just the real bad stuff, I think, if you take care of the bad windows and put screens in, I think everyone will be happy with it, quite honestly.
What if we even tried to do two years, one now and one two years from now or something? And and then the technology one also maybe spread that over three years rather than a hundred and fifty thousand for a year?
Yeah.
Two years?
Okay.
We'll support that, so then
Correct.
So then a hundred thousand more and then seventy-five for this year for for the windows and seventy-five next year that we're talking about? So we're adding a hundred and seventy-five thousand more to it. And then we talk about what we fund, if we can fund a couple of things out of the budget if we need to.
Yeah, I mean, I think with the windows, what's the experience of the people in the rooms? Right, I mean, it shouldn't be bad.
Right.
Yeah, we've, I've I've heard that more this last
It's been, yeah, they're getting this frustration, I mean, I think there's It's been, yeah, they're getting this frustration, I mean, I think there's, I think because of the lack of screens and the desire to open the windows.
Right.
And the inability to really.
Is this screens for, for every window, like, just because it seems like you have some ba, bad, and then you have not bad stuff?
Well, it seems like they did an upgrade, and they put screens in the, the windows that were upgraded.
Yeah.
And then the windows that open in, what's weird about some of them, like at the little, uh, they open in, but the bottom half of the window sticks out, so you can't screen them. Where over at the hood, they have almost identical windows, and they don't stick out, so we can screen those. So that's, that's been the issue. You know, so, you know, we, I bought a few different types of screens, you know, reveals and things like that, but it just doesn't work, you know.
The little box.
And if you worry about bees getting in with allergies.
That's an issue.
Too. Allergies in elementary school.
Oh yeah, no, definitely, I would just say like, with materials, like what they are now, I don't know anything about, you know, industrial like this, but I know when, you know, just the costs right now are so huge, but it would be like, if there are safety concerns, get those all done and then, you know.
I think what we do with the windows, um, at the little, the ones that do fold out, we could buy, instead of replacing the whole window, we could put sliders in there with a screen that can retrofit it. It's a little more money, but the whole window, if you replace the whole window, it's probably thousands. So it, the windows, a lot of them are still, they're still in good shape. A little TLC, you can probably get by for another ten or fifteen years minimum. It's just a matter of how you want to do it. And then there's, you know, obviously there's some windows, yeah, they, they just need to be replaced.
So we're talking about maybe doing five items instead of four?
Yep.
And do we agree clocks is the first one? Or should we not put that at first if we're thinking about funding it elsewhere?
Did I hear you correctly that that somehow is tied to the doors?
Yeah, the, it's tied to the computer system, everything's tied together.
That seems important.
The new system. Or, or the current, or even the old.
Is it current or?
Well, I guess it's the old new system, you know, I don't even know, to be honest with you.
Every day, every few days and reset.
It's been, it's every week now, it goes, it goes in.
Like a priority.
And then there's also slightly different systems to different.
Correct, they're different.
This would get us on a system that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uniform system.
Same support, same, same knowledge base, same.
It's like three different clocks.
Well, I think.
Operational cost lowers.
I think the discussion is not whether we leave it on there, we'll kick it off. The question is, if you're going to end up funding it, would they then just not give us something else, whereas if it was like number four on the list, and we know we're going to fund it if it doesn't get to that point, do we get the other three projects? Because there's a little bit of that.
Yeah, you've got to play the game.
Jockeying that goes on with this. Like if you move that to number four, you put the new technology instructional equipment at five, and you put the other three projects above it, they don't have to go in order anyways, they could still agree to fund that one. But if they did, and if we knew that we were going to do it either way, if we didn't get to our fourth priority, maybe it helps us get, you know, the wifi project that we wouldn't got otherwise.
So you're saying boiler?
Boiler. Personally, I think windows above wifi, but that's just me.
I, I agree, I think boilers and windows should be one and tow.
Boilers and window?
Well, I mean, the heating and cooling, uh, I mean, you don't want to sit in a classroom freezing.
Okay.
I did boilers, windows, wifi, then clock, and the technology instructional.
Hundred, hundred thousand.
One hundred thousand.
I like that, I can go with that.
That was good.
And then the, and the, with the windows, maybe seventy-five thousand this year to try to do half of it rather than spread it over three years, I don't know.
Well, did you say the fifty thousand was to cover the, like, what you need to cover?
That's what we, yeah, that's what we felt like.
What would that increased number, like, would you, what would the plan be, like, what would you do with the increase?
We'd probably be able to just ex, ex.
They said ten.
Probably have the little expand the, the windows that we're addressing, right?
Yeah. I, I'd rather break it up, because I think it's going to go down. I think windows are like crazy money now and then, in months out, yeah, you know what I'm saying, so.
Break it up into three years or two years?
I, I personally go three.
Okay.
Sounds like we've got a critical few.
Yeah.
And, and then we can.
We could probably do some screens in house through our budget, take care of some of that with our own labor. And, you know, obviously the hard, you know, the window stuff, we can't, so.
Okay, so fifty thousand and then, and it, it's waiting till five years is enough for the last ones?
Yeah, I think we can do it.
Are you sure about the clocks, because what if we can't find the funding and then it's at the bottom and then we can't do it and it's still a weekly issue? Are you sure about that? And they saw it last year.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I don't know, that's the only one, the, what you just said sounds good to me, that's the only one.
I mean, we're going to get it, I mean, we're, we would put it in the budget if we needed to either way, and.
Yeah. Right now, I mean, if not, again, it's, you'll hear the budget update at the end of the night, but it's first quarter of the year is ending. If nothing major changed, I think we could potentially address it.
Maybe the food service.
We, we had to, we'd make it a priority.
Service budget.
Yeah.
We don't need time anyways.
Twenty twenty-four is also a contract year though.
Well, and what I'm also thinking though is wifi is eighty thousand, this is fifty thousand, if we don't get the eighty thousand dollar project, we don't want to fund that, we'd rather fund the fifty thousand dollar project.
Agreed.
Which is why if you did boilers, windows, wifi above it, I'd rather than the from the eighty thousand dollar project than the fifty thousand dollar project. They did one of them. And again, they don't have to go in order anyways and they might just.
Yeah, they, they sometimes just kind of change it whenever they want to.
Again, I, I, it's a good.
This is going to sound weird, maybe geeky, don't the clocks rely on the wifi? Different buildings work.
Different buildings.
It does. We can't synchronize the wifi and the clocks and the computers. We've had, Nick has tried, we've, we've been, I mean, we've spent hours on this, we, we don't understand why we can't synchronize it. Even if you go outside and you tap into an outside clock to synchronize, it, it works for one day, and then the next day it's all back to the same.
And these are the, are just the elementary schools, or is this?
This is the high school too. You know, so someone might be able to come in here and look at it, you know, that's, you know, tied into all this stuff, and they might say, oh, yeah, I can do this, you know, very, you know, cheap for us in, at this school, but I don't know about the other schools.
I, I put my confidence in Michael if he can find the funds to drop it.
I think we, we could, right now, I would say that.
Again, maybe we can get it.
All right, so, so to recap. To recap.
It has to get done.
Boiler, windows at, at fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Wifi at eighty. The clocks at fifty, and the technology, uh, classroom technology for the middle school, high school.
Okay. I have it, I got it.
Wait, yeah, yeah, so five of them, right?
At a hundred, right?
Yeah, I don't have that.
Boilers at? Boilers number one, two twenty-five. And then windows fifty at two, the second one. Third was wifi at eighty, fourth was the clocks at fifty, and fifth is technology.
And, and that's something where you pull out the fifty and maybe they can, yeah, so, I mean, you never, you can play the game all night, but, yeah.
And support for us to start pursuing the MSBA for the hood school roof.
A hundred percent.
Yes. Okay, do, do we have a consensus?
And we need to vote on that or?
So we need a motion on that.
Yeah, just in a vote for consensus says how, you know, as, as revised.
Yep, so I, I will move that the committee vote to approve the, uh, fiscal year twenty-four capital request priority order as revised.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Great discussion, guys.
Appreciate that, thank you.
One of my favorite times of the year. The few things that we actually do, really.
It is, it's like making, yeah.
And it does have a little bit of an impact, so.
Absolutely.
What are you trying to say, we don't do anything?
I know, right? Well, um, okay. Routine matters, minutes, who's handling minutes now?
I do.
Oh, Diana does.
But there's one I'll have to abstain from, so somebody will have to remember that one.
Okay, which one, the gold workshop?
Yeah, so I'll do the open, um, the regular meeting, open session.
We can do a motion for it still.
What's that?
You can probably propose a motion for it, just don't vote on it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I move to approve the open session meeting minutes from August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second.
Hi, anybody have any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and then, and then extensions?
Not one, not one.
Good, bypasses by zero.
And then I move to approve, um, the goals, the school committee goals workshop minutes, um, from August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, passes four to zero. One more?
I think that was it, right? Oh, there's one more.
September nineteenth.
Yeah, sorry. I move to approve the open session school committee minutes from September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Budget update, Mr. Conley, we haven't heard from you yet.
Okay, so, um, this evening in your packet was the first kind of budget report for fiscal twenty-three. I should actually say fiscal twenty-three in that first line of the paragraph, but, um, so I think we're in, certainly in, in good financial standing. As we discussed, when we developed the, the fiscal twenty-three budget, we were able to sort of leverage some year-end funding and within, um, the law, we were able to prepay several, uh, special education out-of-district tuitions, um, with, uh, fiscal twenty-two funds. That really has put us in solid financial standing as we've entered fiscal twenty-three. You know, as you can see by the report, there are certainly balances in some of the instructional expense accounts for materials and equipment and technology, I think many of the schools and departments are continuing to encumber funds and place orders as we move through the school year. Most payroll accounts have remained within budgeted amounts, um, we're going to need to continue as we always do and monitor impact of leave of absences, our substitute budgets, um, but right now, everything is certainly trending and within budget. We are certainly kind of monitoring the, the performance of the food service program, certainly with the, universal free meals this school year, and over seventy percent of the student population, at least through the month of September, participating in the school meals program, that account certainly continues to be in, in good financial standing. So I think through the first quarter of the year, even though there are some, always some new costs that come up and some maintenance and repairs and areas that we've had to address, there's certainly been some, some needs in the special education area with, with students' needs and, and a need for some contractual services, and, and, and we've been able to address that, um, mainly because of the, the, what we were able to do at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, we, we had that flexibility. But we're in, we're in good financial standing through the first quarter of the fiscal year. That being said, I'll open it up to any questions.
I have a few quick ones, um, real quick on the food, does Cartwells come and present to us at some point?
They do, yeah, well, I actually, um, discussed with them the possibility of presenting in the near, the near future.
Just, ju, just as we get it balanced, I'm just wondering what we need to be doing with that and what we should be thinking about.
Yep.
Just wondering, so.
Yeah, we can, we can put them on an upcoming agenda, probably before the, the first of the year, if that makes sense.
And then for, I mean, when we're doing the budgeting, I think if we need to budget it, I don't know, I don't know how it would work there, um. So, gas and oil, we're already over budget a little bit, how do we think we're? Are we, are we, is it going to be worse than the five hundred dollar?
No, I think we're, I think we're okay.
I know you prepay a lot of times, so it's, but I imagine it's higher rates this, this year, right?
The rate, yeah, the rates, we actually have locked in to mo, the majority of our gas rates, um, that, sort of the pipeline that we receive, and we're in, you know, we, the, the rate's favorable, unfortunately, the kind of the delivery of that charges are higher, and those have gone up. But I think we'll be, I think we'll be within budget, that might be just kind of an encumbrance. Encumbrance issue there, putting that in the red, I don't, I anticipate we'll stay within budget.
And the balance on tuition, is that because of the prepayment, or is that because the tuitions have gone down from the budget this year?
That's because of the prepayment.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
We're certainly seeing some costs, you know, increasing as we look at, you know, operating materials, so things that we're being cognizant of.
Some of that we've seen this year, we were able to absorb, and the things that we're certainly going to be looking at as we build for next year, we're already seeing that.
How are we, how are we doing with out-of-district tuition, not looking at the budget here because we prepaid, but I mean, is what we had expected, is that about where we're at so far this year?
So far, there's a couple of things that are kind of in, kind of in the works that we don't quite know how it's, what the resolution would be, but right now, it's, it's pretty much what we expected.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions on the budget? Staffing, any update?
Uh, none at this time.
Thank you, um, nice job on the pins and everything too, Dr. Dela, thank you.
Those are, those are nice, yeah, and, and Lyndell picked those out for me, yeah, she did a great job.
It's in donations, Mr. McGowan.
We have one in the main packet and a couple, the three, uh, came a little bit later, so I moved it to the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of twenty-six thousand dollars from Tim Haynes, Assistant Treasurer at the North Reading Diamond Club. These funds are intended for the baseball project at, at the high school as follows, fifteen thousand for the North Reading High School Baseball Infield Project, one thousand dollars for the, uh, uh, baseball infield project for Viking Tree, and ten thousand for the backstop project.
Second.
Second, and any discussion? Diana? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. And I haven't reviewed the other ones, I suppose we can vote on them.
I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of three hundred dollars from Mr. Tim Richmond for assisting with triathlon packet filling for across-country track team activity at the high school.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of a communication board for the highs, for the hood school playground valued, valued at three hundred dollars from Mary Ann and Andrew Keith through the Doug Flutie Junior Foundation for Auti, Autism. This communication board is to support inclusive, inclusivity and accessibility within school playgrounds as well as support children in initiating conversations with peers, navigating social situations and expressing themselves.
Excellent.
Second.
Very nice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
Nope, two more, it just takes me a second to scroll down, I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from the E Ethel Little Elementary School PTO to help defray the costs of buses for the twenty-two, twenty-three field trips.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
And finally, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of two thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents from the middle school parents association purchased twenty-two monitors for sixth grade computer class.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Subcommittee, subcommittee updates, finance planning came out on September twenty-third.
It's a long time ago. We saw that presentation, or a version of.
Mainly what we talked about was where the town backed and town meeting we talked about and wastewater.
And the wastewater, yep, we, yeah, we briefly went over the, the warrant articles for the town meeting that's already happened, so.
So you saw the, the fruits of the labor. Athletic subcommittee, Mr. McGowan or Mrs. Batwell?
I meant to bring that, have that agenda handy, um.
We talked about the, um, we have a scoreboard update. Where is that, can you guys speak to that, because I've heard some, I know there was some other, it went out again, right?
Yeah.
We, we have plans in place to replace the scoreboard, it's all just supply chain issues, the board itself.
But we've been able to tweak the, fix the one we have.
We've, we've, we always are doing the best we can to make that run, um, it's worked, it's worked throughout the week and then you get to Friday night, and it works, last Friday night, we had an issue where it froze. So we're well aware of the issue, there's really, we, we've done everything we can, but we do have a new board coming, the question is, it's probably not getting here until November, or later, later November, yeah, it's just, we ordered this a long time ago, and we're just behind.
And we also talked about the eighth grade waivers before, like the whole concept of the eighth grade waivers, we contributed to that dialogue, and now there's some more, you know, process and, um, advisement in place, um, coming from, where does it come from? Where they put more guidance in place?
From the MIA.
Yeah, um, and so, you know, we're not going to bless every single time, but they have this framework that they can work on, and we talked about the boys hockey team in particular.
And, and just to be clear on that, this is still, if there's a need because there's not enough students that went out, this is not choosing eighth graders over other kids that want to play.
And that's what this framework actually, like, it doesn't even allow, so, a lot of the concerns that we had, and when the questions we asked are all not even allowed through the process, which is great. And so Mr. Johnson has applied for that, those waivers as needed. We talked about the, some, just some updates on some of the other projects, including we had a presentation about, uh, building a, a backstop wall, um, and what that could look like sort of as a future project, and then we, we came up with what we thought was maybe a good short-term solution that, that we're going to try to, to look at as well. I believe those were the major, we, we had an update on the turf field project, which is still taking place down there. We just, we've also replaced the, the sod at the, at the baseball field is, is in progress right now.
Part of the donation that just, we just received is helping support that.
Okay. Fine Arts Subcommittee, Mr. McGowan, Mrs. Reddoff?
Um, that was a while ago. Um, let's see, we talked about, um, the fine arts calendar and, um, we reviewed it and talked about making it a little bit more available on the district website, a little bit more accessible and more robust, so people could really access what was going on. Discussed the theater program, trying to get the fourth and fifth grade musical back at all three schools this year and just the challenges around that in terms of, we have one of the teachers out on maternity leave and just, um, space and scheduling in the pack, but it seems like they're going to try to make it happen, right?
It's an ongoing conversation.
Right.
Um, there's pros and cons to having a show every year at every school and there's a lot of competing time, interest efforts. So we're going to continue that conversation. The next step for us now is getting all of the stakeholders who are in the room, the principals, the elementary leaders and also the fine arts leaders that, you know, I think we, we will come to a good solution, certainly have a good plan in place to have at least every other year at every school.
And, and is the idea still to do it at the Performing Arts Center? Because I think, I feel like the last year or two years ago, there was a thought about doing a smaller one at the, at the actual elementary schools?
Yeah, and, and it seems like I, my thought was, or what I was getting is that it's, it's a, it's a big deal to the kids to have it at the pack. And we're in a unique situation because they were rotating back and forth, but having taken two years off for COVID, that perhaps it would be a unique year to how to try to do all three at once. But there is, Mrs. Kane does have space, time set aside at the pack for each school, but it just gets a little tight on time in terms of preparing.
And it's very specific times that may or may not actually work for the individual schools, so.
Yeah, it's, there are, there are challenges. There's definitely a lot of interest from the fine arts leaders about having a theater feeder program, just like we have youth soccer and youth football and all these, you know, to have a real, robust elementary theater program, which may be more than just doing an every other year kind of show. But then there's the logistics of actually, and you know, it, it's a lot of effort and it's a lot of, you know, to do it the way they want to do it and sort of the traditions of having that big show every other year. So there's some details to be worked out, but certainly lots to speak about.
Has there been any discussion about combining schools into?
Yeah, but.
Do they want to just keep it themselves?
Yep. Pros and cons to that as well. So we've talked about doing like an all-district show every year and then, you know, or something like that. Pros and cons to that with the number of kids, number of staff that would be needed. Are you bringing everyone? Are you making cuts at that point? You know, so there's, there's different, different questions. So certainly all part of it, what we're going to.
The only good news is everybody being on the same schedule helps, but, but I think, you know, the overall interest, everyone is very committed to theater in town and continuing it. And we love the results. We're getting huge numbers at middle school and high school for all of our programs. We, we went over, uh, we do have our new, um, you know, programs this year for a cappella at the middle school and for, um, went to percussion. And so that's, that's well underway.
Do I dare ask, has there been much pushback on the fine arts, on, on the, uh, the fee? Have you heard anything?
So we've received some, um, some, some pushback, just with total, it's, it's just, you know, if your child is doing multiple sports, plus this, plus this, plus this. And so we're, we're looking at it case by case. I know the school committee's got a, as one of its goals to look at this. And so we, we still have time to look at this. I think we have to balance out the, um, you know, as we've said, we're able to offer a lot of options that, you know, the alternative might be, well, then we can't have some of these options, which I think would disappoint a good number of people. But I, I think we can try to, to look at that and see what the burden is. On the other side, there's also the, you know, how do we do the accounting for all of that, right? And how do you, if you come up with some kind of cap, it's like, well, who's tracking all those things? So we're, we did have a discussion at, at our most recent meeting. We meet with this same group, not as a full subcommittee meeting, just internally, and we did talk about that. So it's something we're certainly tracking that we've.
And let's see, there were updates on the screen for PAC. They're trying to, last, they were trying to repair versus replace, is that still?
We are, yep. We're going to try and repair. And we also, we, we think we have some sort of a short-term solution better than what we've been doing. What we've been doing has worked well, but it's a very expensive, uh, piece of equipment, a screen that is working. But if that gets damaged, it's very expensive to replace. So I, I certainly like the idea of, um, a, a smaller screen that could serve that same purpose.
Screen, and where, where is that?
This is in the Performing Arts Center. They have sort of a curtain that, that serves multiple purposes in theater and it's very expensive. It also can work as a projection screen, but that's not what it should be used for. So we, we, we want to get that screen repaired. And then it ties into some of the other systems. We're still looking at our sound system update and a few other pieces as well, so.
Okay.
And then the, um, I, as we were talking about vehicles today, there was requests or hoping for a van for the arts to have a little bit more of a ability to use as the a cappella and other, the groups get bigger, transporting to competitions, regional competitions, to have more access to a van.
What do they, what do they use now? Just parent to drive them or?
They use the, the vans are available for them to sign out, but then there, there's sometimes when they're not available, they're being used by other groups and, and just trying to see what that is. I think they, they want us just to have more access to, to them. Really, the next step is for them to really keep a, a record and provide us like, here are the dates when I went to get something and it wasn't there. You know, the, the date, the number of kids that were needed and, um.
Yeah, we need a little more data on that, I would think.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're really working on now, I think, is what we talked about in our last.
Can, can fine arts use buses like athletics can or not?
So the, the idea of the multi-function vehicles, we have two of them now, was that it would expand the use of those and open it up more to, to fine arts. So we're, I think they definitely have used those and it's benefited them. We're just trying to get what's the need and is it, are they really, you know, used by athletics or another program or area so much that they're, that we need another one? We just want the data on that. There's also sort of the spare special education vans are there and available when needed. One, one idea was that the vehicle that we're replacing with the airmark funding, you know, we don't get a big value for trade-in. We, and that has some life. We could, we could sort of make that exclusively fine arts. It's, it's a smaller, it's not a fourteen-passenger, like I think it'd fit ten. But we could sort of let them, we could keep that insured and let them use that if the need is there as well.
So that's all part of the conversation that we're having. And just as you mentioned earlier about adding the dates to the calendar, this is on, they're all on the district calendar, um, on the website. So, and they, they've added a tremendous amount. So all of these marching band competitions are on there as well as, you know, you skip ahead. So there's a lot of events on here that are chorus, all-town chorus, some of those events. So they've all been added to the site. So that's been, that's been great.
Yeah, great to see. Now, Ms. Lister suffered a setback last week with her musical.
Yes.
Losing the rights to the middle school musical.
They have replaced it.
They have replaced it, right?
Yeah, I was just, it's funny, like, I was at North Shore Music when they announced the shows and I didn't put two and two together, but I was like, oh, that's a cool show. That's coming, that's, I think that's most likely what happens is when we want to do a show, but it's happening elsewhere in the area, the, the owners of the rights.
Yeah.
Regulate that, so.
Yeah, I also noticed.
What did we lose and what are we getting?
What?
What did we lose and what are we getting?
We lost Percy Jackson's The Lightning Thief and gained Into the Woods, I believe. So, um.
There's a big difference between.
That's a big jump.
But, um, you know, it's a pivot.
That's an, that's ambitious, Into the Woods.
Yep.
Little Sonheim for the middle school.
There was a child there this week.
Any, uh, any resolution or to the marching, to the field usage?
Oh, yeah, that was the other thing.
Uh, ongoing conversation.
Okay.
So we've, uh, you know, the light, the lights certainly help with that. I think it's, um, there's still a little bit of a conversation, but I, I was talking to them just the other night about that. So it's, it's better, but there's still some, some pieces there.
Would the additional lights in a few years, as we were talking about, would that help or is that?
I think it definitely would, yeah. I think our marching band program keeps growing. So we have them working, they're using half of the, that lit, lit field, it's lined for them. But I think when youth football's in there and then it spills over and it's kind of, and, and the, the band keeps getting bigger.
Yep. They're already having a hard time staying in the space.
Yeah. I also noticed how the band, they're, they're building their upper body strength too and they're pushing those, that equipment up the hill after the games too.
Can I ever use the tennis courts? Could anybody ever use the tennis courts for anything or not? I mean, it's a lit area.
Not for that part. It's not just the lighting though, it's the lining. So, so the whole, one of the things was trying to get them on the turf field and trying to find time for that, which is very difficult. But by actually lining that backfield, they can practice in real time and in real space.
Yeah, that's the spacing, that's really, really working on. Those are the key things. Ongoing, the, the ever-present storage container discussion, but.
Yeah, I think that's ready to come up.
Might, might come up.
It's in place and we're very happy with it.
Upcoming meetings, finance planning meets on Friday.
Yep.
Policy Subcommittee, I forwarded something to you guys. What was that about? I don't even remember.
There, there's several updates from, um, from MASC that we're going to look at. We're going to schedule that soon because I've actually got a note on something here as well in my administrative report.
Yeah, because there was a couple, a couple of things that came out that I forwarded along to you guys.
Those to look at. So there's, there's some things to look at with policy for sure.
Um, administrative report, Dr. Daly?
Sure, just a few items. So we have the K-12 Action Committee, which met on September eighth. This is the group that falls under the CIT, the Community Impact Team for the, the town. I've decided to now sort of combine all our efforts. So the K-12 Action Team is now the umbrella group that underneath that has health and wellness, bullying prevention and diversity, equity and belonging. So that larger group comes together. It can be comprised of anyone who wants to join just to hear updates as well as the constituents of those subgroups. And now what's starting to happen is those subgroups are having their own meetings where they set goals and come up with what they want to work on that year. So, um, that first meeting was, was very productive. We have the Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, Belonging Subgroups that's going to meet tomorrow evening. And then we'll have a bullying subgroup that's going to meet soon as well and health and wellness has already met. So those are sort of the three main groups. And then we have another meeting coming up in December, which is sort of the second meeting. So those meetings are the check-ins, progress meetings, um, throughout the year.
Dr. Daly, I, I received an email about that. Did everybody receive that? Did I receive it because I was on the committee years before I got on school committee?
What was this?
About the K through twelve meeting that was coming up. I received an email about it.
I don't get it.
Yeah, you, you, you would have received it from Mr. Colleen if you signed up or registered at some point.
I don't think I got, I, I just received a meeting about it and I was like, because I was on the K through twelve before I was on school committee.
Yeah.
I don't know if like they just, I don't know if I have to officially resign to that from that still, but.
That could be too. I mean, I, I've tried to include everybody who was in those, uh, two groups and, and let them know, so.
Well, I officially resign from that if, if, um, if you're looking for me there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
There's that update on the Understanding Our Differences Program, which we've talked about. This was the North Reading CPAC as well as, see, the econ director, Student Services, the Understanding Our Differences Program, as well as our elementary schools, the principals were involved in piloting a program for grade three students this year. So we heard about that a little bit last year. The, in collaboration, working with the Understanding Our Differences Program identified what may be a good program. They came up with a few suggestions for grade three. What they ultimately determined for this pilot was the Deafness and Hard of Hearing Module. And so there's going to be, uh, at the hood school on October twenty-first, the bachelor November fourth, and at the little school November seventh. So this is a nice step forward for increasing our, um, understanding of, of inclusion and understanding our differences. So we're excited about that. I wanted to provide that update. As mentioned earlier, the communication board at the Jade Turner Hood, Hood School, I think that may have actually, we may have received that earlier. But when we put those in tonight, we wanted to make sure we, make sure that it was approved. The board was delivered to the hood school. We were able to walk that site today. Dr. McKay and I were there, uh, Mr. Campania there and other building and ground folks. It's a really, it's a really wonderful tool and it's, it's a way for a student or a peer or an adult, anyone, to say, how could I communicate with you and ask you your name and ask if you want to play and how to really facilitate communication outside. And so we want to have that board in a, in a ADA compliant height, level and location that's very close and easily accessible to the playground. So we're just going to put some additional structure there to have that. It's a really nice sign that, uh, that, um, Mr. Marion Keith was able to facilitate through the Flutie Foundation. And so when that actually is up and fully operational, we'll do a social media campaign. We'll probably have the transcript involved as well.
That'd be great.
Just to celebrate, because it's a really, it's a really cool, um, achievement as well. Um, and the last one is about, this is a topic that comes up quite a bit, so the, the concept of a comfort or therapy dog or animal. I saw actually this, more than one presentation, I believe, at the MASC conference on this topic as well. We are not, uh, at the moment having the, um, any kind of a program or a permanent program at any of our schools. But we have, uh, at the bachelor of the hood and the high school have plans at the moment to schedule some visits where a therapy dog comes into the building for an amount of time for a presentation or for some interaction with students. And so this is an item that I think we can certainly look at with policy Subcommittee as well, just to be proactive as there's so much coming out about this. We might want to be thinking about what this would look like if there was, um, if there was something more in the future. I don't know if anyone had any questions about, about these ideas or the concept, but this would be for social, emotional wellness, for healing. We have also instituted the puppy cam at the high school that you may have seen there. Just if you're having stress during exams or anytime, you can stop by the media center and just watch the puppies playing. It's been very well received, I must say. It's sort of like a twenty-four, yeah, we can all go. It's a twenty-four hour, uh, stream. I don't, I don't know that it's running right now, but it's, it's a live stream of puppies playing.
That's awesome.
Yeah. I'm not exactly sure, I'm not exactly sure where this stream's coming from. But, um, Mr. LaPrette, uh, investigated that. I think he either, may have done a visit to another school and saw it and he said, I love it, puppy cam, it's coming here. So he, he researched that and figured it out. I'm fairly sure that that's how that came about.
Okay. Thank you. I liked, I actually forgot, Subcommittee, I went to the finance, the, uh, CPAC, did a opening, like, meet and greet and I went to that, which was nice too.
How was that?
It was good. It was a couple, it wasn't, it wasn't very well attended, but there was a couple of, I will say, there was a couple of new parents there that are new to the district and they were very overwhelmed and by this, by the kindness of people they met. Like one woman shared that she had been, like, they had moved from a town, they moved to, I won't say the other time, they moved to another town and her daughter was there for like six weeks, didn't ever feel like connected with anybody. And day number one, came home and said, somebody gave me their number to talk to. And like the mother was basically in tears about how, how much she liked the community so far. And so they were literally moving in at the time. They stopped, they came to the thing, they had a moving van that was half unpacked and they came to the thing, so. This is also a parent though, probably be involved because she ran the CPAC at her school in, in the past. And so she, um, and there was another, another parent there also who was new to town and, you know, but both of them said they really felt, you know, accepted right away, so.
That's great.
Yes.
How often does that meet?
They do different, like, this was just a meet and greet at the Horseshoe Grill.
Okay.
But they have, they have actually a surprising number of webinars that they're planning. I don't know if you guys all got that e, emails, but like, surprising number of webinars that they have planned that they're going to be presenting, so.
Yeah.
It was good.
Thank you.
Just one other item we did, I shared with the committee the, um, the MCAT scores and the accountability reports that have been released, what's publicly available. We'll have that report coming up in November, um, but the reports will be sent home to parents on Friday this week. So there'll be information coming out, um, from each school and the individual reports will go on. And then we'll have our report to you on November fourteenth.
Any correspondence?
None at this time.
So our next meeting is a month away? We're November fourteenth?
It is, we have Halloween next Monday and then, um.
And then November twenty-eighth, we have a meeting. There is a special town meeting, which I assume we're going to have, we're going to, not have to, we're going to attend as well, so.
December fifth.
It's, uh, December fifth or seventh, whatever that Monday is. Or is it Monday or not? But, um.
What was the fifth?
Just put that on, or maybe it's not on.
We can, it, I, I think it's, um, it, I know we're reserving the room and holding it, so.
Yeah.
I don't know that it's officially been determined that it's that day, but maybe it has.
Okay.
That's not wastewater though, is it?
It is.
That's wastewater. That's wastewater, that's a special town meeting.
So I haven't added that to our calendar. If it's official, I will, um, but I am.
I think we should hold it either way, but.
We were holding two dates and we were at, we were, um, but it, it sounds like it will be the December date. And if that's official, I'll check with Mr. Gobert if it's official and then, uh, I'll put that in the calendar as well.
And then December twelve.
And I assume that you would attend, in a special town meeting, you would attend the same way you would at a town meeting. It would be a similar setup, so we'll do that, yeah.
And only question is, on the schedule, six forty-five, are we starting fifteen minutes late on the other one or not?
No, right now that should be six thirty.
Okay. I didn't, I just didn't.
Not even sure how that could in there.
We're, we're that one, okay. So there's nothing else? I retain a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Thank you.